Welcome to the closed session portion of the city council meeting. I'm calling this meeting to order. The time is now 5:30. Madam Clark, will you take real call please?
Councilmember Gama.
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Here.
Councilmember Martinez.
Present.
Mayor Protem McQueen-Lajon.
Here.
And Mayor Perez.
Here.
We will now hear public comments. Comments are limited to three minutes. Madam Clark, does anyone have a public comment tonight?
Yes, we have a public comment from Joan Dart.
You?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and Council. This seems a little odd. I don't usually comment at people's performance reviews. But I wanted to come and show my support for James Vega. I've been kind of paying attention to city council meetings for the last three, four years. And I just have to say that I really appreciate having a city manager who shows up, who's supportive and still considers the city business and the city interests when he's dealing with concerns of other people. So being involved with a couple of nonprofits, I've reached out to Mr. Vega when we needed help and support. And he's been helpful, but like I said, he does consider the city's best interests when he does that. But he does it with a lot of respect and he listens and he's considerate. And I don't know what goes on behind closed doors, what his employees think of him. But from a public standpoint, I am just really pleased having sort of learned about how city councils and cities work over the last couple of years. I'm impressed with the way that he runs the meetings and how he organizes the agenda. And it seems like he is listening to the council and to the public in bringing things in front of the city and the council. So that's why I'm here. I'm gonna leave now. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. City Attorney, will you please read the closed session item into the record?
Absolutely, Mayor Perez. There's one item of business on closed session for tonight as public employee performance evaluation for the city manager pursuant to government code section 54957 subdivision B1.
Thank you. Do any council members have any conflicts to disclose for the listed closed session item?
Nope.
Right. Alright, we are going to recess to closed session. Council recess to closed session. The time is now 5:32.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City Council regular meeting. I'm calling this meeting to order. The time is now 6:30. Will everyone please stand for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, please take roll call.
Councilmember Gama.
Gama's here.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Here.
Councilmember Martinez.
Present.
Mayor Protem McQueen-Lejeune.
Here.
And Mayor Perez. Here. The inspiration tonight is given by myself and it will just be brief. I don't know the names of all the organizations, but I plan on rectifying that. But I want to give a shout out to every agency that came in to help with the disaster cleanup, to help to provide services for the people who were affected. Those who came in, the Red Cross Salvation Army, those who provided food, the Lions Club who came in to assist with cleaning up. And please, any other agencies?
Team Rubicon and UMCOR and volunteer organizations active in disaster and United Way.
I would just want to send a shout out to everyone and thank them so much for the help they provided to our community. Mr. City Attorney, would you please provide a closed session report?
Absolutely, Mayor Perez. There was no reportable action taken in closed session tonight.
All right, thank you. We will now hear public comments not pertaining to items on the agenda. Comments are limited to three minutes. This process will be the same for comments pertaining to each addenda item. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments?
I have two general public comments. The first will be Becky Brunin followed by Greg L. Ross.
Yep.
Evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, staff. I'm here representing Royal Guppy Outdoors tonight. We have taken a sabbatical during our fishing days in November and December. We're going to start that up again this month on the 28th. And Kevin is calling it Pajama Jammy Jam where you can wear your pajamas to go fishing in. So go to our website, sign up, and we hope to see you out there on the pier. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for listening. My name is Greg Ross. I've been a Ventura County resident since 1970. I've lived in South Oxnard and Port One Eme since 2005. I'm here to label my discussion as perhaps the inconvenient truth. Apologies to Al Gore. We're concerned, I represent a small group of homeowners, that we're concerned about the pollution and the cancer rates that exist. And there's been a lot of press lately. Michelle Lockston, I passed out. I think Mr. Vega sent that around too as well. And just driving over here, it's a three minute drive for me. I heard another report about the pollution issues of the port because of the rain recently and the fact that the boats coming into the port, they can't hook up to the electrical grid. So the cancer rates are quite intense. Ventura County is 505 deaths per 1,000 residents. In our area, just our little tiny community, our cancer rates are 10,000 per 100,000. We've lost 10 or more people in the last 10 years to cancer. And so basically, my goal here is twofold. One is to put it on your radar screen a little bit so that you know that this situation exists. Secondly, we don't have all the information we need. The nearest pollution recording is a mile and a half away, not really downwind from the port. What we just need is more information and we need a way to track it and verify it. So it's science and it's truth, not just me up here talking and saying we got problems. But this is the sort of thing, this is in your packet, that you'll see when you walk around the port area, Market Street and Surfside. My wife and I cleaned our front edge of our overhead ceiling fan recently and this is in your packet as well. These are the rags that came out of that. And it was only cleaned like a month or so ago before that. So there's a lot of particulates up in the air that we're concerned about. And I hope that now it's on your radar screen and maybe we can get back in February to address with a little more comprehensive presentation. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
The council is not able to discuss public comment items that aren't on the agenda. At the end of the agenda, we have a future agenda item portion where items can be requested, but the council is not able to discuss at this time.
All right, we will move on to agenda approval. May I have a motion in a second for approval of the agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
Madam Clerk?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing un, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Do any members of council have any conflicts of interest to disclose for any item on the agenda tonight? Hearing un, we will move on to presentations. The first presentation will be given on behalf of Chief Federico, the Senior Officer Promotions of Henry Montalongo, Rick Miranda, and Gladys Harbin.
Yes, and the chief will be presenting this. It looks like if I had forgotten, we have our police presentation. I was just reminded as I walked in, so if you want to introduce.
Thank you all. Tonight, we are recognizing the promotion of three officers from police officer to senior police officer. These are your two strippers. These are the individuals between the level of officer and sergeant. Tonight, I will be introducing Henry Montalongo, Ricardo Miranda, and Gladys Harbin. The role of senior police officer is your lead position amongst officers in the department. The senior officer is not only responsible for the same general duties of your Port One Eme police officer, but they are also responsible for training others, coordinating the work of others, the supervisory of others in the absence of a police sergeant, and so many other increasingly responsible duties that require a higher level of skill and experience than your police officers. They are your supervisors in the absence of a sergeant. And with that, some will be and some have been acting sergeants for a long duration, such as several months on a patrol shift deployment or when there has been a need arrived in detectives. With that, Port One Eme, these are your future department leaders. With that, Port Wayne Eme, these are your future department leaders. And at this time, I'd like to introduce Senior Officer Henry Montalongo. Henry started his career with the city of Port Wayne Eme 18 years ago as a police explorer. Beginning as a police explorer, Henry grew within the program and became a dispatcher at the age of 18. While still working as a dispatcher and volunteering as a police explorer, he also took on a position with the city of Port Wayne Eme Community Development as a parking enforcement officer. In 2010, Henry was hired as a reserve police officer and then a full-time police officer in 2015. During his tenure here with the city of Port Wayne Eme, Henry has worked to earn his bachelor's in organizational leadership and organizational studies from Arizona State University with an academic standing of cum laude. Henry is currently working to complete his master's program from the University of Alabama with his major being in organizational leadership. His academic goal is to earn a doctorate degree and utilize what he has learned during this course of his work as an officer for the city of Port Wayne Eme. As a police officer, Henry has held many positions and collateral assignments. These include traffic investigator, beat coordinator, cannabis control officer, and homeless liaison officer. However, there's one program that he holds dear to his heart, and it's as an advisor for the Port Wayne Eme Police Explorers. Henry's been an advisor for the explorers for over 13 years. He has overseen the professional development of these young adults and has also run the Oxnard and Port Wayne Eme Combined Police Explorer Academies over the past six years. When asked, he cannot foresee a better opportunity than overseeing the development of teens into responsible young men and women who have gone off and started their own businesses, became lawyers, nurses, pharmacists, Marines, Navy personnel, and of course, police officers. And before I move on to his badge pinning, I have to note, like, there is a dynasty of Montalongos in the family. They are part of this community tenfold. Many of you already have noticed, but Henry's not the only Montalongo here with the city of Port Wayne Eme. He has an older brother Frank, who's our property and evidence supervisor, a reserve officer and explorer advisor. His older sister Veronica, who's a recreation attendant and can also be assisting with the explorer functions, whether it's the Thanksgiving dinner giveaway or the car show. Port Wayne Eme is truly a family affair for the Montalongos. Please join me in congratulating.
And the Montalongo.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, and council, and everyone here in attendance. I'd like to thank my parents for always being there for me. And of course, my brother and my sister, who have been my rock whenever I'm in my low and who have always lifted me up. And of course, thank you to all the explorers for showing up. And I promise this was not a mandatory detail for them. Thank you, guys.
Ricardo Miranda. Ricardo, Ricky, Rick, all his many nicknames. Ricky was born and raised in this community. He came from a family of law enforcement. He's been involved in law enforcement for over 10 years in different capacities. In 2019, he was hired by the Port Wayne Eme Police Department as a police officer, and he served for the past, where he served for the past five years. He was first assigned to patrol where he worked three years. And during that time, he was awarded not only the Mothers Against Drunk Driving Award for his DUI apprehensions, but also the 10-851 Stolen Vehicle Recovery Award two times. Two times. And he was also our Port Wayne Eme Police Officer of the Year. So during his time on patrol, he was a failed training officer for our newest officers, and it's something that he holds dear, is mentoring our newer officers. After only three and a half years on patrol, he was selected to assist an investigations unit as a detective. And as a detective, he was in charge of investigating property crimes, sex crimes, crimes against children, and assisted with homicide investigations. He's also assisted with their crisis intervention team as a crisis intervention coordinator. On a very lovely note, outside of law enforcement, he has enjoyed coaching and mentoring the youth in different sports to make a positive impact for them. But he also enjoys his family time because he just celebrated the recent birth of his third child.
Oh.
So we're very excited for him. Join me in congratulating.
Oh my gosh, look at that.
Okay. That was the sweetest pinning I think I've ever witnessed. Thank you for that.
Just keep it brief. I just want to thank the city council members for all your support. I really do appreciate it. I want to thank my peers. I appreciate all your help. All your mentorship has really got me to where I am today. And especially, I want to thank my family, my fiance, my three kids, my family all here, the Miranda clan. I want to appreciate everything you guys have done for me and stuck with me through thick and thin, which has allowed me to get to where I am today. So I appreciate it. And I want to thank also the community members for all your support as well, for the police department. So thank you very much to everyone.
Senior Officer Gladys Harbin. Gladys was born in Ventura, and she grew up in Oxnard and Port Wayne Eme. She joined the Port Wayne Eme Police Department in 2009 as a police explorer. In 2012, she aged out. And they get too old to be a police explorer, but that didn't stop her. She became a police volunteer. And in 2017, she was hired as a parking enforcement officer with the city. That's a common trend amongst some of our folks as you hear. In 2015, Gladys graduated from the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Academy and became a reserve police officer here with us at Port Wayne Eme PD. In 2017, she was hired as a full-time police officer and assigned to patrol. She's worked at patrol and investigations, and she served as a failed training officer for our newest officers. She has also served as a crisis intervention coordinator. I know Gladys has a passion for working with the youth. She holds a great reputation on our schools, especially in elementary schools with our staff over there. She has also indicated to me that regardless of her future assignments, she'd like to do more in our schools. So I'm going to be holding that to her in the near future so she can do some more of that. Ladies and gentlemen, join me in congratulating Gladys Harbin.
Thank you. For being here. First, I'd like to thank my family for supporting me since day one. My parents, this opportunity, the job that I wanted to do, my career early on as an explorer. So thank you to my parents for supporting me through thick and thin. To my family who's here, my aunts, my cousin, my mother-in-law, and of course, my husband. Without him, I wouldn't be here. Big support of mine. So thank you. Thank you all. And also a big thank you to my sergeant, Sergeant Bates, for pushing me and guiding me through all this. So thank you so much.
Thank you all for your support, and thank you, community, for your support. Appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you. The next presentation will be the 24th anniversary of Alaska Flight 261 Memorial Proclamation. And that is being read by Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor Perez. I'll just give it a few minutes while everybody.
Clears out.
That's family right there.
Okay. Okay, all right. I'd like to thank Mayor Perez for allowing me to read this proclamation. This incident in particular is very near and dear to my heart. As I was serving at the time as the manager for the sheriff's office of emergency services, I was one of the first on scene in our emergency operations center and then continued to work this incident for at least seven weeks and continued to show up for the families to this day on January 31st. So tonight, we're honoring the 24th anniversary of Alaska Flight 261, whereas on January 31st, 2000, at 4:22 PM, Alaska Flight 261 crashed in the waters off Annaquappa Island, approximately 13 miles from Port Wayne Eme in Ventura County, resulting in the 88, in the deaths of 88 souls, five or crew members of that plane. Whereas the accident was the largest loss of life due to a transportation accident in the history of Ventura County. And whereas the crash of Alaska Airlines Flight 261 activated an immediate response from over 75 different federal, state, and local agencies, the military, local nonprofit agencies, and private organizations. And whereas the city of Port Wayne Eme, police and stationed 53 of the Ventura County Fire Department were among the first local responders to assist with the immediate response and recovery. And whereas the families of the victims came together to promote commercial aviation safety by working together with Alaska Airlines, the Federal Aviation Agency, and the National Transportation Safety Board. And where it is by the work of many that commercial aviation today is safer by addressing the cause of this accident and working to ensure this information is used for the safety of those who use commercial transportation. And whereas the city of Port Wayne Eme continues to host families of the victims each year on the 31st of January to honor the 88 lives lost and provide comfort and compassion to the friends and families of Flight 261. And whereas it is important to see how individuals in our county and the city of Port Wayne Eme came to embrace the families of Alaska Flight 261 by showing and expressing kindness, compassion, and giving spirit. And whereas it is important to educate the public about the event of historical significance and how members of our community came together and continue to do so to support the family members of Alaska Flight 261 in its tragic loss of life. And whereas, as we gather to remember the 24th anniversary of this tragedy, it is the intention of the city, council, and staff to remember those who died and always keep our community a welcoming and warm place for Alaska Flight 261 family members to visit, to honor, and remember those killed on January 31st, 2000. Now therefore be proclaimed that the city council of the city of Port Wayne Eme does hereby proclaim January 31st as the day we honor the 88 souls who died on January 31st, 2000, and recognize that the kindness of our community members continues 24 years later and will always urge residents of Port Wayne Eme to exercise compassion in our daily lives for the bitterment of our family members, our colleagues, and every individual we encounter. Proclaim this 16th day of January 2024.
Thank you, Councilmember Hernandez. And next, we will hear a reading of the proclamation in honor of Martin Luther King Jr. Day by Mayor Protem McQueen-Lejeune.
City of Port Wayne Eme Proclamation, Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Whereas on January 15, 1929, Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was born in Atlanta, Georgia. And whereas Dr. King was a transformational leader of the American civil rights movement and one of the most influential orders for peace, equality, and human rights in world's history. And whereas Dr. King is remembered for dedicating his life to an unyielding faith and passion for justice and racial harmony by championing the principles this nation was built upon and a strong commitment to his belief of freedom, equality, justice for all. And whereas Dr. King envisioned a society where individuals were not judged by the color of their skin, but the content of their character. And whereas Dr. King sacrificed his life to spread message of universal equality and justice that was displayed by his efforts to end racial segregation and discrimination through civil disobedience and other nonviolent means, such as his heroic leadership in the 1955 Montgomery Bus Boycott and the 1957 Southern Christian Leadership Conference, in 1963 March on Washington, and the Selma to Montgomery marches in 1965. And whereas Dr. King's word continues to resonate with the world today by reminding us of the imperative to continue to fight for justice and equality, no matter the opposition, because the ultimate measure of a man is not where he stands in moments of comfort and convenience, but where he stands at times of challenge and controversy. And whereas people throughout the world continue to be inspired by Dr. King's vision and words, his strength of character and compassion, and his model for peaceful demonstration and dialogue. And whereas in 1983, Dr. King became the first private citizen to be honored with a federal holiday, which was yesterday, not just to celebrate his memory, but also to preserve his legacy, one that calls upon us all to exercise our moral authority, stand up against injustice, and protect our most sacred tenet, democracy. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the city council of the city of Port Wayne Eme does hereby proclaim January 15th, 2024 as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Proclaim this 16th day of January 2024.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. We will move on to the consent calendar. We will now consider items on the consent calendar, which will be enacted in one motion unless a council member has a request to remove an item for discussion. May I have a second, a motion and a second to approve our consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hary none, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We have no public hearings. Moving on to business items. The first business item will be an update on local storm and flood emergency declared on December 21st, 2023. Will staff please present?
Thank you, Mayor. We don't do this very often, but with something like this that's really important in our community, we've asked some of our partner agencies to come out and help us present a little bit about what all of the agencies have done related to the storm so far and all the work that's gone into it, into recovering from the storm. And so I have a couple of slides that we'll start with, and then I'll ask some of our partners who have been working with us to come up and speak a little bit about it as well. I know most of our residents probably know this, but it really is hard to explain to people how severe the rain that hit Port Wayne Eme on December 21st, 2023 was. And you can see from this map, the narrow. And you can see from this map, the narrow band, that it hit us and a little bit of Oxnard, but it really did not hit many other communities. And so, it's very hard to explain to people just how severe it was in our community, while somebody in, you know, Thousand Oaks or even Camarillo may not even remember that date or that there was a storm. It wasn't out of the ordinary for them. But here in Port Wainimi and in parts of Oxnard, it was a very severe storm. And so, when we're talking about the recovery from that storm, we are still in the recovery phase of that December 25th storm, which totaled more than six inches of rain total, six inches of rainfall. And at its peak, at approximately 1:30 in the, in the morning, we were seeing three inches of rain in an hour, which is essentially unheard of. I think the estimate is that hasn't happened in over 100 years, and it's classified by the County Flood Control District as what they call a once-in-10,000-year-level storm. So, some people in this room are watching, may remember this from the morning, getting the tornado warning alert. And so, we didn't end up getting a tornado, but the impacts were not far from, from the impacts of a tornado when, for those houses in those areas that were sort of in the, right in the trail of this storm or directly located next to some of the drainage channels and things like that, that were impacted by all of that water coming down at once. So, we have the storm on the 21st. We've been calling it historic for a while, but at this point, I think it's officially historic. And here, we have a photo from the LA Times of one of our businesses here in Port Wainimi dealing with the storm. And where Port Wainimi, or, I'm sorry, the LA Times called this a historic, genuinely extraordinary rainfall. And so, yeah, some of the photos that we've seen, and a lot of people in this room probably have seen some of these things already. We've seen more than we'd want to see of this, but, you know, there were cars floating, there were cars abandoned in the middle of the street because, because they were floating and then they came to land somewhere after people had to evacuate them. There were houses, and I think that's the next picture, internally, that had feet of water within their, their units, not, not inches. And there on the right is what, sort of what we're dealing with right now, a lot of, a lot of our community members are, is that next phase in the recovery, which is, it's good that we're, that we're getting to that phase, but it's not over yet. People are living in situations where drywall's taken out of houses, flooring is taken out of houses, and that's, if you're lucky enough to have had a contractor who's already responded and gotten to that point. Because we have so many units impacted in our community, and there's only so many contractors out there. So, so, we're still in the midst of what we're calling the recovery phase. In total, the count was 422 structures impacted. We've gotten a lot of questions about sort of, you know, what was major damage versus minor damage and, and what was affected damage. I think that's actually probably one of the biggest questions we've gotten. And you can see from this chart that minor damage is classified as between 1 to 17 inches, which is a huge variance there. And I think anybody who has 17 inches of water in their house would say they don't feel that's minor damage. And I think we've heard that a lot. But these categories are, the categories that we've had to track them in to sort of match up with FEMA's requirements. And so, we've had a lot of people say, you know, to have 14, 15 inches of water in your house and to have somebody show up and say it's minor, doesn't feel good, or it doesn't feel like we were acknowledging the damage they had. But, and we, so we want to let everybody know, we weren't saying that you're, you know, that the impacts weren't great, but when, when we're asked to classify them for FEMA for purposes of tracking, it falls into their category defined as minor, which is, which can be severe. So, so, we've had, this is between, this is total structures in, impacted by the storm. So, it includes Wainimi, but also includes Oxnard. And I think there's been a couple of structures from Ventura as well identified at this point. Wainimi's total number, I think, was at 188, I think, is, is what our number is. So, we were a big chunk of, of those structures. The other thing that is really mind-boggling to think about, that maybe it doesn't seem like a big deal when you see it, but there were 644 vehicles damaged. We had, in parts of our town, we had, I saw at times 10, 10 or more tow trucks lined up, just towing vehicles that had gotten water to the point where the vehicle was damaged or the electronics weren't turning on. And so, you can see here that in Port Wainimi, 265 vehicles damaged. A lot of those totaled, a lot of those complete losses. And people who have been watching the news the last couple of years know vehicles are harder to find than ever before, and in a lot of cases, more expensive. Even used vehicles are more expensive than they've been. And so, to know that 265 vehicles were damaged and there's people who've lost two vehicles and had damage inside their house, it's, it's a pretty heartbreaking situation. So, so, that's a little bit on, you know, the rain, what happened that day, some of the impacts we saw from that day. For us, we've had, we've gone through a few phases of the storm. Preparation, we're going to ask, we're going to have our fire department representatives come up and speak a little bit to how they prepared to. But the city and other key agencies, such as the fire department, had taken steps to prepare for the storm by increasing staffing and inspecting areas prior to the, to the storm. So, that was sort of phase one. And at that time, it was forecasted to be a couple inches of rain over the 24-hour period. Well, we ended up getting a lot more rain than that. And so, we ended, we ended up having to go into emergency response phase of the storm. And we, along with county, fire, the various, our police department, and other police agencies in the areas, because it did impact Oxnard and some other areas, we had to respond to hundreds and hundreds of emergency calls that day. I think the damage is so much that we lose track of this, but we do want to point out, you know, we responded to hundreds of calls, and there was no loss of life, and I had not heard any reports of significant injuries. We know one person went to a hospital, but it was more for pre-existing issues. So, in that immediate response, no loss of life and no significant injuries is something we don't want to take for granted. And then, the next few days after that, people probably saw some of our employees going out with, with clipboards and things like that. Or actually, we have tablets now, I guess I'm dating myself. But they went out with tablets, and they actually went into hundreds of units and assessed the damage to be able to provide the damage assessments to FEMA and other agencies. And we went out and assessed over 180 units for damage in the, the couple of days that followed the emergency. And then, while we were doing that, we saw the need for dumpsters, which we were able to roll out. And, but even, we had some of our Public Works team members out with scoopers and things like that, lifting people's couches and beds and things like that, that they had pushed to the curb into the dumpsters, because just the amount of heavy items that were ruined that we had to help remove and get out of the way. So, there was just a lot of work with that. We also worked with County OES to coordinate with volunteers and service providers, and I'll talk a little bit more about that towards the end of the conversation. And we continue to and still continue to document needs to try to get state and federal aid, and we keep advocating for those, the state and federal aid as well. And so, after those first few days, we really entered recovery phase. And to be honest, what we're finding is this is the hardest part of this emergency. Maybe the immediacy is not there, maybe it's not, you know, the urgent circumstance that it was on day one, but there's a lot of people who need a lot of help. And one of our key challenges right now is we have some gaps, things like FEMA, FEMA based on sort of outdated requirements on their end, they don't see this as an emergency at this time, because, not because of the, the level of damage wasn't severe, but just because we didn't have enough people who had severe damage. And so, that's one of the challenges we're working for. We've been advocating with County OES and city of Oxnard and ourselves. We've been trying to advocate. The Board of Supervisors issued some support. We've met with Congresspeople and other representatives. We've asked them for support, and they're, they're working on that. And then, on tonight's agenda, we have a recommended approval of a letter that we would send to also try to advocate for support there. So, the recovery phase is a challenge right now. I think the elephant in the room is, we hear from a lot of people right now who say there just isn't enough help coming, there's not any funding yet, there's not, you know, help replacing items and things like that. And we all feel it, we're not ignoring that or acting like it's not happening. We're trying to make sure we advocate and we try to get help, but it is, it is what I would call a gap right now that we're trying to, to address. So, by advocating with, with FEMA. And I just spoke a little bit about how we're doing that, so I won't go back through this. The good news, and one of the partners that we have speaking here today, is that the first sort of form of state assistance has come through with the announcement that Small Business Administration loan assistance is available. It opened up officially on Saturday and will be open Monday through Thursday, I believe, at the South Oxnard Library. And we have some of the representatives here, and later in the presentation, we'll ask them to give some more information on that. So, with that, we're going to have, I'm going to, I've asked three of our partners to speak, fire department representative, Captain Williams, the County OES representative, Patrick Maynard, and then our SBA representatives. And so, I'll be introducing each of those and ask them to just give a little bit on what some of, each agency has, has done thus far. So, Captain Williams, we have a couple slides here for you. Do you want the clicker, or do you want to just say next?
I'll say next.
Okay.
I don't need that power. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Potem, City Council, staff, members of the public. My name is Joe Williams. I'm a division chief with the County of Ventura, and I'm your acting fire chief with the city of Port Wainimi. Tonight, I'm going to talk about our responses as an op area. An op area means city of Oxnard, County of Ventura, and city of Ventura as well, to the rains of the night of the 20th. So, what's beneficial for me is I'm a duty chief, and so, I manage the entire county. We have three shifts, so I'm the C-shift duty chief. I was on duty that night and days prior. We have a conference call with the National Weather Service, and they let us know what's pending. So, based on the weather, I think it was estimated two to four inches, coasts and valleys, mountains were four to eight inches. And based on that and the possible amounts per hour, we instituted a Plan II flooding. It's kind of our middle. Next slide, please, and it'll show, we added an extra 112 personnel. So, command staff, PIO, safety, logistics leader, about 11 people, two swift water teams, six persons each, Oxnard Fire also had one swift water team, five utility trucks, which have two people on it each, it's usually for flood mitigation, four hang crews, each crew has about 20 personnel with leadership. They were instrumental in the Wainimi Bay Club for doing search. We were able to grid out, go door-to-door, and make sure everybody was safe. Three heavy equipment teams, those are dozers, front loaders, two helicopters, we have a Firehawk and a Bell 412. They were on 24 hours, and we added dispatchers. I was in the dispatch center that night. I think I texted Mr. Vega about 3:00 AM, letting him know how bad the flooding was. We had 98 pending calls that people couldn't even get to. So, I think the next slide, please, will show the, the level of calls of that night. It was in the other slideshow too, I'm not sure what street that was.
Yeah, might be Oxnard, I think, because the county's slides include the whole affected area, which included some parts of Oxnard. I didn't recognize it.
That day, we responded to 981 calls, and it's not just VCFD, it's the, that's the county, because our dispatch center dispatches for the entire op area. 231 were weather-related, and we averaged 576 a day, we ran 981. I'd ventured to guess that most of those 231 were between 2:00 and 4:00 AM, because that's when that cell kind of parked over us. One interesting thing about that cell was, as it parked over this area, I was anticipating it to go north, because that's where it came from, either hit Camarillo, Ventura, and then Ojai, but it seemed to peel left out into the ocean. So, unfortunately, we got the worst of it here, the rest of the county was spared. Next slide, please. Significant impacts. Wainimi Bay Club, about six blocks of senior living homes were flooded, 60 homes were affected. We had 10 rescues there. Overall, that day, we had 14 swift water rescues. That is usually people who drove across moving water on a street and get stranded, and they end up on the roof, and that's when our teams go out and get them. And one ocean rescue. I believe that's it for the counter's response. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. So, the next speaker is going to be Patrick Maynard from our County Sheriff's Office of Emergency Services to talk a little bit about some of the post-disaster recovery efforts.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council and residents of Port Wainimi. Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. As Mr. Vega indicated, my name's Patrick Maynard, I'm the director of the Sheriff's Office of Emergency Services. As Port Wainimi residents, you may wonder why the Sheriff's Office is involved in this. What I can tell you is, our Office of Emergency Services provides service to all 10 Ventura County cities. We operate the county's Emergency Operations Center, and we're here really to support all 10 cities, as well as our unincorporated areas when these disasters happen. So, we often find ourselves in communities that are unfamiliar with us, other than seeing, you know, sheriff's deputies out in the field. Our team is here really to support the cities when things like this come up. We do a lot in the Office of Emergency Services, or we call ourselves the Office of Everything Services. Councilmember Hernandez knows all too well. But one of the big things that we really work to accomplish following one of these events is securing important state and federal disaster assistance. So, I really wanted to take this opportunity tonight and talk about a couple of the federal disaster assistance programs that we have available to residents following an incident like this. So, the first program that's available and out there is what's called the FEMA Individual Assistance Program. And as the title indicates, this program is geared towards assisting individuals with damages that may occur following an incident. To qualify for this program, FEMA looks to have found upwards of 1,200 either destroyed or structures with major damage. Again, Mr. Vega alluded to this earlier, major damage is classified as water into the structure over 18 inches. It's very disheartening that that's the, the look that FEMA is going for when it comes to classifying major damage. We all know that two inches of water in a structure is major, if not feeling like destroyed to all of us. But when it comes to flooding, the big thing that really is a tipping point is, once water reaches on average 18 inches, it makes its way into those electrical outlets, and your entire electrical system within your house has to be replaced, more often than not. Not always, but more often than not. So, that's kind of why there's that tipping point. Once we, we get word of, of damage, we go out and do damage assessment, we determine, you know, ultimately, how many structures meet that requirement or meet that, that level of damage. And we share that information off with the California Governor's Office of Emergency Services. CALOES, as we call it, is our state partner in disaster response. And the state then makes a determination as to whether or not our event is large enough and whether or not they want to reach out to FEMA for assistance. So, in the case of what we saw on December 21st here in Port Wainimi, both fortunately and unfortunately, we did not have 1,200 structures with major damage. You know, flooding is unique. We see... You know, flooding is unique. We see destroyed structures or unimpacted structures with fires, but there's a lot of ambiguity to flooding incidents. And again, fortunately and unfortunately, we just did not see that level of damage. If this program is activated, it can provide residents up to $41,000 of grant funding to help them recover. That funding can be used to make repairs. It can be used to purchase lost personal property, things like clothing and bedding and all that kind of stuff. Again, it is a grant program. It is one of the only grant programs that is available through FEMA for residents. Unfortunately, I just want to set expectations clearly. While the requirement is for 1,200 structures, we recognize the need locally. So we recognize how challenging the situation is. And just because we know it requires 1,200 structures doesn't mean we didn't attempt to get it and we're still trying to this day. I can tell you, early on, we enlisted the power of many of our state and federal elected representatives to go out and really rally both the state and FEMA for this assistance. Thus far, we, we have not been told that we received this. Again, I want to set expectations clearly and state that, you know, we got an uphill battle here. Odds are not in our favor, given the number of structures that we have. But we're doing everything we can. We know that this is a vital piece of assistance. So please know that just because we didn't see 1,200 structures out there with this level of damage, doesn't mean that we didn't even try. We're still trying and really have since day one. Next slide, please. The other program that's available from the federal government, which you're going to hear a little bit more about, is a disaster loan program. And that program is made available through the SBA or the Small Business Administration. We typically think of the SBA as being there to help businesses, but post-disaster, that program is actually there to help residents as well. Of course, when you're impacted by disaster, free money is always better than a loan. So we'd much rather have grant opportunities and loan opportunities. But absent those grant opportunities, a loan is better than nothing, I suppose. So I don't want to steal the SBA's thunder. What I will say is that we quickly submitted our data. Shortly thereafter, representatives from the Small Business Administration responded to Port Juanine and also Oxnard. And together we conducted what's called a joint preliminary damage assessment. So if there are any residents in the audience that had inspectors come to your home and take a peek inside, that process to conduct that preliminary damage assessment is really there just to verify damage. We're not there to verify every last ounce of damage. So if that trip into your home was quick, it's quick for a reason. They can pretty quickly go into your home and tell, hey, there's a water line there. We know that water exceeded 18 inches. Or it was below 18 inches and they've seen what they need to see. I know that that can feel a bit disingenuous, but that is the process. They're there just to kind of make that quick determination. The good news is, we qualified for the SBA program. Really, we have to have 25 structures in our operational area with at least major damage. We were well beyond that. We were somewhere in the range of 50. So fortunately, that program was ultimately approved. The SBA can act on their own accord and issue an emergency declaration at the federal level and activate those programs. They've done that and as of Saturday, they're actually operating in the City of Oxnard, providing residents loans. Next slide, please. I mentioned this earlier, but I want to restate it. We've been advocating from day one and when I say we, there's more than just us in this room. It's been a team. A team of people that recognized the need very early on. Recovery, as Mr. Vega alluded, it's the worst part of a disaster response. We often think of the, the initial emergency phase as being the most challenging, but I will tell you, recovery lives on for years. So we knew that we needed the support of everyone to, to try to get what we can. So that advocacy started the night of the incident, or really the morning of the incident, rather. We quickly began gathering damage information and sharing that over with the state to kind of give them a heads up. It being the holidays, it's challenging to ensure that they have staff in place to, to come down and do those preliminary damage assessments. We wanted to give them a heads up. So we stayed in constant contact with them. About a couple of weeks later, we, we hosted, a little less than two weeks later, we hosted an elected officials briefing. And organizing that, it was very strategic. So there's a reason why every council member, other than Brown Act issues, wasn't invited. We strategically wanted to invite our state and federal elected representatives with purview over our areas that were impacted to put them on notice that we needed their help. We need their help advocating. As much as I want to say that FEMA is there to help us and the federal government and the state government is there to help us, you know as well as I do that we need to advocate for that support. So we wanted to put them on notice early on that we needed their help. So we held that briefing. We shared this important information with them and challenged them to go out and meet with the other state and federal agencies and rally for support. And then lastly, the County Board of Supervisors heard an item just a couple of weeks ago now and issued a letter of support to CALOES specifically requesting Director Ward consider a few things. I've already talked about the programs that we asked for within that letter. We made that request early on. We reiterated that request on January 9. One of the additional things that we did ask for is absent any of these federal programs, again, we know that we have SBA assistance, but absent FEMA assistance or any other state assistance program, we asked the governor to consider any type of one-time funding opportunities that could be made available to any of the jurisdictions, whether it's a city, the county, an NGO, somebody, consider providing some type of state assistance locally to assist our residents. The two programs I highlighted are both federal programs. There is no state program specifically geared towards assisting individuals respond to disasters. And that's a huge void that we feel, especially on these small incidents that don't qualify for any of the major programs. And I think my last slide, if I'm not mistaken, talks about that. So some of our challenges. I'll be frank, these programs are broken. They're really broken, especially with inflation and with the price of goods nowadays. Even when these programs are activated, you know as well as I do that $41,000 is just dropping the bucket if you lose your entire home, especially if it was paid off. So I say all of this to say that these programs are broken. California has no individual assistance program. There are other states with, within the United States that have their own state programs for these smaller type incidents. CALOES has tried on three separate occasions over the last 10 years to implement a state program. All three times it's failed in appropriations. It's a bummer because we are feeling the void, the lack of a state program in these cases. And then of course, again, I mentioned this, but our federal programs are just completely inadequate. So something is better than nothing, but we recognize that all of these programs are just not ideal when it comes to responding to disasters. That's really where we, we lean on our community organizations. And that's my last slide, I believe. My last slide, we highlight the availability of our voluntary organizations active in disaster. Government, all too often, we look to, to, to save the day, but government often lets us down. We, we've all experienced that. So in comes our community-based organizations and our non-governmental organizations to save the day. There have been some tremendous efforts by the American Red Cross, Team Rubicon, that there's too many to name. If I start naming, I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave some out. But they've been out there helping as much as they can. What I can tell you is that leaves us at collecting information from residents on any unmet needs. We understand that everyone has a unique variety of needs. We encourage you to report that information to 211. You can call 211 from any landline or cellular telephone and file an unmet needs report. I want to make this very clear. 211 does not have all the answers right now, nor do we. So if you have not heard back on some type of unmet need, it's very important, please be patient. And I know that sounds cliched and painful, but know that we are working very diligently to go down that list of unmet needs and connect individuals with resources. That's a tricky process. It definitely does not happen overnight, but I want everyone to know that while we may not have the answers, we're continuing to work to try to connect people with resources. Just today, we had a great meeting, looking at ways that, you know, soliciting the private sector and making donations and how we can make that potential money available to residents. So with that, that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Gama?
Yes, in regards to the SBA, does that stand for Small Business Association and Administration? Are those only available to small businesses or are residents available to access those?
Thank you for that question. I, I don't want to steal the SBA's thunder because they'll be presenting next, but both the SBA, the SBA loans are available to both businesses and, businesses and residents.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much, Mr. Maynard, for being here tonight and helping our city in our times of need. I know that you were directly involved from like 1:30 to 7 o'clock in the morning, helping with evacuations, which is a rarity. You don't, I mean, somebody of your level, your stature, doesn't get out in the field like that often, I imagine. So thank you so much for your help. I really appreciate it. And I just wanted to express my gratitude for, for all your assistance.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. And I want to thank Chief Williams for coming and, and Patrick. I've, I know all of those agencies are just running ragged right now, trying to get all these things in place and trying to get programs in place. I joked at the board meeting, but I still mean it, is I cannot figure out when Patrick has gone to sleep. So, so we really appreciate them also taking the time to come out here and help explain some of those things that we're doing. And then last, we're gonna invite up, I think George and Claudia are here from SBA. And we're gonna give them an opportunity to talk a little bit about the Disaster Loan Assistance Program that became available and open for business Saturday, but, but really today too. So with that, I will turn it over to George.
Hello. We did submit slides. I don't know if you have them or not, and if you don't, that's okay. We can give you, you've got a lot of information there, which is super helpful. There's a chance that could be maybe posted online, so people can read the information. That would be phenomenal. I know it's very short notice. So first off, good evening, Honorable City of Port Juanine, Mayor Misty Perez, Mayor Pro Tem Martha McQueen Ligon, Councilmember Stephen Gama, Laura Hernandez, Bobby Martinez and City Manager Brad Connors. My name is George Castirco. I am with the US Small Business Administration. I'm here to provide an overview of SBA disaster loan resources available to assist people impacted by the December 2023 storm and flooding disaster. Just a little history, just so you kind of see how this rolls out. I think Emergency Manager did a phenomenal job of really kind of giving you the playing field of where we're at and why we're here versus maybe why FEMA is not. SBA received the Administrative Disaster Declaration request on January 8th from CALOES for damages to businesses resulting from the flooding that occurred December 21 through 23. Ventura County met that damage criteria for an SBA Administrative Declaration following a survey that was conducted on January 3rd. Our administrator signed an Administrative Declaration on January 10th. So to kind of frame it and give you a bigger picture, Councilmember Gama, SBA offers low-interest loans to businesses of all sizes, nonprofits, homeowners and renters, not covered by insurance or other recovery funds. So essentially, for those that are not insured or underinsured, we can provide opportunities for funding. At this point, I also want to acknowledge the muscular effort of Ventura County Sheriff's Department Office of Emergency Services led by Patrick Maynard and Kim Delacorte and with their swiftness in helping us get the word out and what we can offer. It's only been a couple of days and I'll share a little bit about what happened on Saturday at the Recovery Center. Finally, we have left some information at the back of the room with more details. That same information can also be found at the Disaster Loan Outreach Center at the Oxnard Library. So essentially, to frame the disaster loans, SBA disaster loans are available to homeowners for up to $500,000 to replace or repair their primary residence. Renters and homeowners can borrow up to $100,000 to replace or repair personal property. Businesses and nonprofit organizations can borrow up to $2 million to cover disasters losses, not fully covered by insurance. Businesses up to $2 million can borrow funds to help meet financial obligations and operating expenses that could not have been met had the disaster not occurred. That's a second loan. That's not a physical loan. That's considered an EIDL loan. So I'm going to get into a little more detail. So to frame it also, when this county was declared under an administrative declaration, unlike a presidential, which of course we experienced last year, there are four eligible California counties that can apply for the Storm and Flooding Disaster Loans. So essentially, while the Ventura was the primary county, Kern, Los Angeles and Santa Barbara, they're contiguous. They all enjoy the same benefits. So last year, for example, under the presidential, Ventura was declared. You guys would have received physical and EIDL loans, but any contiguous counties were only eligible for EIDL loans. That's the difference between a presidential declaration and the administrative declaration. So in a sense, there's a broader spread of benefits. Of course, as the Emergency Manager mentioned, really the, the pain, the devastation was concentrated pretty much in this community with a little bit in Oxnard, other than the vehicles that were hit. So SBA offers low fixed interest rates with terms up to 30 years to help in recovery. There's no cost to apply and no obligation to accept the loan if approved. The December 2023 Storm and Flooding Disaster Loan Rates are as low as 2.688% for homeowners, as low as 4% for businesses, and as low as 3.25% for nonprofit organizations. Eligibility is based on a case-by-case review for each applicant. Some other recent developments, along with the increase in the loan amounts which happened last year, is there's no interest for the first year and no repayment requirements for the first 12 months. SBA disaster loans have no closing costs and no prepayment penalties. This is very critical, though. This is the deadline. So when we have a physical disaster, it's basically a 60-day deadline. There can be extensions and sometimes there are. So in this case, the deadline for anybody who has suffered any damage and is interested in applying with the SBA programs must do that by March 11th, 2024. So essentially, if you've gone online, if you've visited the center, if you've called the 800 number and you've gotten the, the process started, you're good. Don't have to worry. It doesn't end. There's no, we're not going to run out of money. There's none of that kind of stuff. Sometimes there's like pool money. There's only so much for a community to get. That's not an issue here. Everybody has the same opportunity for the same amount, based on the limit. So the EIDL loans, which are Economic Injury Disaster Loans, is a second program. This is, this is primarily for businesses and what it does is it provides working capital loans up to $2 million to help small businesses, small agricultural cooperatives, small businesses engaged in aquaculture and most private nonprofit organizations of all sizes to meet their ordinary and necessary financial obligations that cannot be met as a direct result of the disaster. These loans are intended to assist the disaster recovery period. So let's say, for example, in this, in Port Juanine, you had an abalone farm. That, that would be the kind of thing that they would be benefiting from the program, not only the disaster side, but also the economic impact. I'll just give you a modest example. In Santa Barbara County, last year, we had a number of those, though, so that's an example of that. Loan rates are as low as 4% for businesses and small agricultural cooperatives and 3.25% for private nonprofit organizations. And again, that can go as long as 30 years. So if, if an EIDL loan, if it's a cash flow kind of a situation, paying employees, that kind of thing, the deadline for that is a lot longer. That's October 10th. So that goes, depending on the declaration, either eight or nine months. So that one, people haven't, or companies, individuals, nonprofits have until October 10th to start that process. As was mentioned earlier, the SBA has a Disaster Loan Outreach Center at the South Oxnard Ranch Library at 4300 Savior's Road, ZIP Code 93033. As you were alerted today, the hours of operation were expanded pretty dramatically based on the need. So right now, the hours are from 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Monday through Thursday. Saturdays are 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Now, when somebody shows up at 2:59, we're gonna stay to help them. The doors might close, but if they're in the building, they're gonna still be helped. So we don't turn anybody away. That's not the way SBA works. And I mentioned earlier, the muscular efforts by not only the county, but the cities to get the word out to those interested in SBA help. On Saturday, the opening day of our Disaster Loan Outreach Center, we had more than 100 people arrive for assistance. That is a phenomenal amount of folks. That shows a need and I'm certainly hoping that helps Mr. Maynard and others as you work towards talking to the county, to the state and the federal government in terms of any additional assistance. While some of those people had to leave for work or after learning they, they had the ability to register or enroll online, our field operations staff assisted 71 people that first day, probably the largest group in recent memory for a first day of an agency disaster loan outreach center. So that's really speaks volumes to your organization, this city, the county, the chambers, getting the word out for folks to show up. And we are grateful. We really are grateful because when we can show that kind of need, that means we can be here as long as possible to help folks. We try to keep the open, the Disaster Loan Outreach Centers open until the need is met. So we asked those that if, we asked that if there are those in the community with needs we haven't, that haven't come in yet, please come to the center at the Oxnard Library. please come to the center at the Oxnard Library. It's really great to have that one-on-one help, because sometimes the forms can be a little confusing, the kind of information they're asking for. When you get that person there, walking you through and giving you examples, it's super helpful. But if you know someone that is unable to get to the Disaster Loan Outreach Center, they can also apply online through SBA Secure Site, sba.gov/disaster. And that is another way to go ahead and apply. So we, we also have the SBA customer service number, which is 800-659-2955. And anybody can email disaster customer service, allrunon@sba.gov. So finally, this disaster is clearly devastating to this community, without a doubt. As you can see, it's impacting the businesses, the homeowners, and I'm sure a number of renters were, were really hurt with this loss. So basically, SBA is really here to help, and that's, I'm glad I was able to get, I was given the opportunity to speak that even though we're called SBA, we do help homeowners and renters. So if anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you.
I had just two quick ones, if I could. And one is because I actually spoke at a kind of a town hall meeting this morning, and I said something, and some people in the room seemed to think maybe, maybe I was interpreting it differently, so I just would like to know. But reading the fact sheet, it noted that the loan can be repaid without interest for the first year.
Right.
And so we were trying to tell people, because some people are saying, well, I'd rather wait and see if FEMA assistance or something like that comes through, rather than start the process for a loan. And so when we spoke with a couple hundred people today, we said, you know, go to the South Oxnard Library, get information, and there is this ability to repay it without interest after the first year if, if some other assistance comes through, but don't sit and wait and count on that when you have this opportunity in front of you.
It's really mission critical that people, even if they're not sure, go ahead and enroll. It, it's like, you know, when folks have been pre-approved for a mortgage, you're no under obligation at all. It's good to find out what you're eligible for, and it's really important to enroll before that physical deadline, because once you're in, you're there for perpetuity. It doesn't change. It does not, you, you don't lose anything. You, the only way you're going to lose something is if you don't come in and inquire and find out. I think you gave them excellent advice. Our hope is that we do get more assistance here on the federal level. I think it's, when we worked in partnership with FEMA, we actually, while we're equals, FEMA's lead, especially in the first response aspect of it, so we're kind of part of the recovery thing. So what would happen in a typical Presidential, let's say, and some of you in the community may remember this, you come in, you talk to FEMA first, and then in that FEMA application, you can be referred to SBA. Some people come straight to us, and we obviously want to work with them, but we also explain to them, please talk to FEMA. There may be some benefits that you might be eligible, or grants, the kind of grants that Mr. Maynard was bringing up. We unfortunately cannot give money away and not ask for repayment. It's all the, what happens with these loans is when they're repaid, they go back to the U.S. Treasury, and then they're recycled through. And, and that's why I want to emphasize that there is no limit. We do not run out of money. I know we've heard some stories where FEMA can run out of money in terms of allocation. The SBA is a different setup. We're, we're set up with the financial industry. We have banks that are there, that are eligible, that are, that are backed by the U.S. Government and their loans. So they are, they are ready to, to, to offer the funds. It's just that there are certain requirements that you're going to have to meet in terms of the loans, so.
Could you also talk on if you are denied first? There is a second, or like an appeal?
Right. So it's frustrating for those up in the field, and I know you guys have, that sometimes government can speak backwards, or you'll get a sentence in the first sentence in a letter that says you've been denied, and you don't think that there's any hope or any opportunity. So what will happen is that we will, if we don't get the right information, and a lot of times this is when people submit information on their own, they might be missing a, a digit of their social security number. They may have an address that doesn't jive with something that's part of the record. Maybe they forgot to fill out the form that allows us to look at federal tax forms, because that's some of the thing that we do to validate income. So what that person, what will happen with that individual or business is they'll get a denial letter. But in every denial letter, there's an opportunity to appeal, to provide additional information. We certainly encourage people to get denial letters, to come to the center, or to call, or get online and follow up and find out what, what was the reason why. We, I can tell you that on the backend, in terms of when we look at loans, there's a lot of, especially with the newer, the, with the enhanced loan programs, there's a lot more flexibility in the program than we had before. So this administration has really bent over backwards to try to make sure that where we had maybe really strict collateral standards at a certain dollar amount, those have been basically, those are very flexible in terms of having that collateral to get a loan. In terms of looking at some of the financials, if you don't have regular tax records, a W-2 can work, those kinds of things. So there's, there's opportunities to work around it, and everybody's financial situation is considered on its own. So everybody, everybody will have a different outcome. People ask, well, how long is it going to take? Well, it really depends on how soon all the pieces come together. If we have all the pieces, we can come back usually in about two to four weeks with, and what I don't really call an offer, but basically, an outcome in terms of what would be available for that person based on their financial situation. And that, sometimes in that case, a denial letter comes, but we're always interested in reviewing those denials. The only thing that's missing here, unfortunately, and this is where there's some confusion because of some people suffered losses last year in the Presidential, is you'll have a, FEMA will deny you initially, send you to SBA, and this drives people crazy. But unfortunately, it is a process that we kind of navigate. So SBA will go, well, you're close, but this doesn't, it seems really what you need is to go back to FEMA. And we will, once we deny and go back to FEMA, then they can go and look at a second level or a third level, and that goes into some of the grants, I think, that Patrick's talked about. We don't have that safety net right now with FEMA. It's just SBA here right now. So I just want to be very clear that while we have an internal re-review process, we don't have that ability to reach out to another federal partner for a re-review or reconsideration.
Thank you.
May I ask one last question? It's just, today, we, we've had a couple meetings with a couple hundred people, and so some of the questions I've heard, and sorry to put you on the spot on this.
No, no, please.
But just so we know sort of, you know, where potential gaps would be that we would need to focus. But you mentioned social security number. Are these programs only available to U.S. citizens at this point?
So what we're, what we're trying to do is we encourage people, no matter what their background, to come in and apply. It's really based on income, and, and we're not going to discriminate based on, I mean, basically, our, we just ask people to come in and, and find out what's available.
Thank you. And I would echo that for anybody watching or anything. We, we do hear right now a lot from people saying that they're aware of people who haven't come forward and reported issues because of that, and we, the city doesn't consider that as a factor, and I think to echo your point of, you know, come talk.
Yeah, I mean, there, there, you know, there could be, there could be somebody in your household. You know, that, that, there'd be questions that we'll ask, and we'll find out that there is somebody that's eligible. Maybe not you as an individual, but maybe somebody else is, and then they can work it out, work it out that way.
Thank you.
Yes, I think this is more of a comment, not a question, but I would hope that we could double down our efforts to communicate to residents that you can apply for a SBA loan, because small business, you know, that, it just, I just want to make sure people understand this is available to residents.
We'll, we'll keep getting that message out. We've been, we, this came together very quickly, which is great. I think it was over like, what, Thursday to today, where we've been putting out the word and getting the word out. But we'll keep trying to get that message out, because today too, that was a question a lot of people had. They're like, well, I don't have a business.
Yeah.
You don't have to.
But I'm, I'm, I'm so glad to hear that, you know, you're busy. You have 71 people come in.
Oh, no, no. We are, we are super, we are grateful. We, you would not.
That may, I think we're the ones who are. I mean, that is.
On one hand, we see that, I mean, the pictures tell the story, the stories we're hearing, complete unexpected tragedy. I mean, people losing everything they own, you know, in, in some instances. But also, at the same time, you know, we want people to come in and ask questions, and they are asking questions. And the other thing I wanted to share with you today, and it took a little while, and it came at the same time as the enhanced hours, is we were able to get out our robust messaging in Spanish. And so we sent out emails today, not only one in English, but one that really is written in Spanish. And we asked people just to use that, send that out to the community, so they can see we're working with the, you've got the, the console here. We're going to be reaching out them to. We already let them know that we're going to be coming, so we're going to be working with the consulate, working with Spanish media. And so having those documents in Spanish makes it a lot easier. And I do want to share with you that Univision and NBC in Los Angeles on Saturday was very interested, and I sent them pictures and video. So they wanted to cover the event, even though they couldn't send somebody. We were able to send them some things, so they were able to get the word out to the community. So I'll be reaching out to Laser Broadcasting tomorrow, a couple others. I kind of was hesitant at first because I didn't have that, that document. Now I do, so.
Great. Anybody else? Questions? Okay, thank you.
All right. We do have materials back there, and please, are these live streamed or? Okay, good. Anybody out there, please don't hesitate to come to the library. Our staff is ready. We've expanded the staff. We're now in the computer room at the library, which makes it a lot easier for everybody, a little more room, a little more privacy. I think before, the first day was a little siloed. I think people felt a little claustrophobic in the, the line and people waiting. We've improved that. So we appreciate every, we appreciate the community's patience with SBA as we try to gear up and provide the best that we can, and certainly lay the groundwork if there's any opportunity for reconsideration with any other federal help. So thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. Mr. City Manager, do you have anything else?
I think that's it. Yes, I think that's it at this time. We had a couple meetings with different neighborhood groups today, and we tried to answer some questions specific to the, the different neighborhoods that we were hearing. But I think for the purpose of this item, we appreciate County OES, our fire representative and SBA for, for coming and talking about it. I think you heard it from each of those people and from me, that right now, the biggest challenge we have is we all fill this, you know, the vacuum of where FEMA normally is, and that we're trying to each kind of piece together help. But it is hard, because we don't have that sort of magic bullet that FEMA usually provides. So we're still advocating for that. We're still going to keep advocating for different assistance from different places. And I think the message we were trying to get through to, to residents when we've been having meetings recently is this isn't a case where, you know, we forgot about people and we're just back to day-to-day. We're all, we're actively working on it, but we know it's to the point Patrick made is, is the FEMA challenge feels like an uphill battle at this point, but we're going to keep trying for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I already asked it. I asked if there's public comments on this item?
No, but there are no public comments for this item.
Thank you. So we have a recommendation to receive an update on the local emergency declared on December 21st, 2023, and to approve a letter to the California Governor's Office of Emergency Services advocating for disaster relief due to recent unprecedented weather events, and authorize staff to continue advocating for disaster relief for residents, and to receive an update on the third-party liability claims. May I have a motion and a second?
Were we?
No, and you know, if, there isn't a motion on the floor yet, so I could just speak very quickly to it. And partially, it was because we ended up, we went out and met with Wayne Bay, where some of those liability claims issues are extremely relevant, and I didn't hear anybody from Wayne Bay here today, so we weren't going to speak to just that specific issue. But in a nutshell, and I think it says in our report, we're aware of some issues related to some claims we've received based on one of the emergency response vehicles. And the city is working closely with its Claims Adjuster right now as we speak. Our risk management team is working with them. We are getting them all the information that we can get on those claims to try to expedite that process. We also asked our insurance providers to contact the residents who right now are waiting. We've heard that some are waiting to make repairs, because they're waiting for the outcome of this claim investigation. And we've asked our insurers to contact them, make sure they have all the information, and then get out of the way and let them make the repairs. And then ultimately, when the city and our insurance provider get together, then we're going to review it and make, make the determination. So we're actively working on that. We're aware of the questions related to it, and we don't want people to know, or we don't want people to think that it's something that we're hiding from or we're ignoring. We're, we're not. We're working with our insurance company. We're going through that process now.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Can I confirm who the motion, who made the motion?
Councilmember Martinez?
I made the motion.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. The next business, yes? The next business item is City Council Liaison Committee Appointments for 2024. Will staff please present the report?
Yes, so just at the beginning of each year, we typically go through our committee appointments for the City Council and discuss those appointments and whether there's any desired changes to those appointments. So today, we have, in your packet, we have the list of the different committees that we have appointments for, and the current list of who's appointed to each committee. It's a lengthy list, so I'm not going to read it item by item. But essentially, this is the opportunity for the new year and with, and with our reorganization and the rotation of the mayor and the mayor pro tem positions, for us to talk about adjusting those for the coming year. So my suggestion would be essentially opening it up to the council to discuss whether any changes are desired, and if so, which, what, what are those changes?
Okay, so I guess I will start with Councilmember Martinez. Why do I want to keep calling you Hernandez?
I'm, I'm not just Martinez, but I'm Brambilla and I'm also Hernandez, so that's probably why. So seeing as I teach between 8:00 and 2:30 PM, there's a couple that I, that I'm alternates, that if anybody wants me to take over, I can take over, such as the Water Agency, Port Wayne Water Agency, VCOG, or the air pollution, which nobody's assigned to that one yet. That's at 6:30 PM, every Thursday when necessary. But honestly, like, if anybody still wants, like, for example, Gama, if you still want VCOG, that's fine. And if Councilmember, Mayor Pro Tem McQueen La John, if you still want the Water Agency, that's, that's fine too. I'm, I'm just letting it know that I'm, I'm comfortable with my appointments, and if anybody wants to rotate, that's fine. I'm, I'm, I'm good. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Good.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with my appointments. I'm more comfortable with Beacon and Animal Services. I feel like I'm contributing mightily to those two organizations. I'm on the Executive Committee with the, with Beacon. VCOG has been a, a challenge for me, trying to find purpose. And I think I found that purpose in reviewing our priorities last week. One of the priorities that VCOG has is waterways and beach health. So I got reinvigorated, and I really want to try to, to work VCOG to help us get all the interested parties in, in, in working to better our ocean environment, so. So I'm very comfortable with the three. The only thing that I'm a little concerned about is that I think I saw that we have a new committee. Okay, I'll dominate mayor for that one.
Which?
The new Federal Outreach and Advisory Council. But I want to trade you, or I want to go to that, but how about, do you want to try the Water Agency, Mr. Martinez? Since you're so gung-ho?
Yeah, no, I, the Water Agency, I think it's.
It's one of mine.
Is it?
Water Agency. Yes. The three of us. Yes.
Okay. I see you're in that. Oh, I see. Okay, I see. It is, I, I wouldn't mind. I, I mean, I'd be more than happy to take on the role to represent us on the Port Wayne Water Agency.
Okay.
And just because Councilmember Hernandez asked us at the last meeting if she could send her comments, knowing she was going to be having to leave early. So she did send her comments, and I'm not sure if we, if we got that to everybody, so I guess I.
No.
So just to, just because a couple of the committees that were just discussed were on her list. So just so everybody's aware, I think Councilmember Hernandez proposed that the Federal Outreach and Advisory Council, which is part of the Association of Defense Communities, that essentially it have the same representatives as the Regional Defense Partnership because of the tie-in there. Association of Defense Communities, that essentially it have the same representatives as the Regional Defense Partnership because of the tie in there. And that's, that's what was requested. It doesn't necessarily have to be the same, so it's obviously the choice of the council, but I just want to let everybody know that that was a request. And the other two requests that I see from Councilmember Hernandez was VRSD proposing Councilmember McQueen Lejeune. And, oh, with the alternate being Hernandez, so that's just a switch. And then VCOG proposing Mayor Perez with Councilmember Hernandez as the alternate. But again, I just want to let her, make sure everybody knows that, but it's also ultimately up to the council to decide.
And I, I was thinking about VCOG, but it takes, it causes me to have to leave work early to attend that meeting. So I thought about it over the weekend and elected it's not good for my work schedule.
It's 4:00 PM on a workday in, in Camarillo.
Which means I have to leave at 3:30.
Yeah.
Or, yeah, 3:30.
Yeah, and I'm reinvigorated. I have a mission.
This is like trouble.
I have a mission.
But she can be the alternate. I'm the alternate currently.
Yeah. Yeah, that, I mean, that'd be
Switch that, since she's requesting to be an alternate.
Yeah. So alternate Hernandez for that one?
Yeah.
For VCOG. So right now, I'm just gonna sort of track what, what we agreed to and then at the end, then we'll obviously need a motion to, to approve all those things.
Ask one more question. Is it true that, well, I'm sure it is, the Ventura County Air Pollution, it's newly added and we don't have any representation on that?
Right, so there's three, there's three committees, well, the board and two committees. So I'm on the board and then I'm on a standing committee. There's a third committee, the Advisory Committee, and that's been vacant. Port Oneimi has had a, a spot on that and it has never been.
And what exactly does the Advisory Committee, because I might be interested, even though my time is tough, but I'm, I think that's something.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just looking forward to it, Paige, I can tell you what it is.
They meet once a quarter?
Yeah, it's, it's meet, you meet, I want to say as needed, but let me, let's find it first. Anyone say it?
It's on page 511. Ventura County Air Pollution Control District Advisory Committee is newly added. It's an appointed body that reviews proposed new or amended rules as part of the public engagement process for rule development. The Advisory Committee makes recommendations to the Air Pollution Control Board regarding adoption of the new or amended rule. And the committee's recommendation is stated at the board's public hearing considering the rule action. The committee occasionally takes up other issues related to air quality and is comprised, comprised of 20 members. Each county supervisor recommends two members and each of the 10 cities has one member as, one member appointed. So it sounds like it's a sort of like an initial review and then make a recommendation that then the board approves or declines. So maybe like the vetting, vetting process?
Or Advisory Council.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, like our Citizens Advisory Council.
So then, does our city have two appointments from our
One.
One?
Yeah.
From our supervisor and who is that?
Well, each city has one appointment, so that's the appointment we have is, is our city appointment. And then the supervisor, each supervisor also gets to make appointments, but that's not what we're being asked to do at this point. We're just being asked to fill our city spot.
And so at some point, our, our supervisor will make an appointment?
Yeah. And theoretically, they could ask us to appoint somebody else, but they haven't done that yet.
Okay, I'll avail myself to that.
So I would like to Councilmember Martinez, I would like to try the Water Board Agency out, or the Water Board Agency, the Water Agency. It's almost like being waterboarders. But I, I would, I'm still interested in doing the, the yeah, the Federal Outreach and Advisory Council.
Okay, good, so let me say this, so I know there's been a request or proposal that the same person on the RDP does the federal outreach, but I'm on the RDP and I have already a standing air pollution board meeting on the day of this federal outreach, so I won't be able to do that.
Okay.
And that's on Zoom, so I don't have to worry about having to drive.
Yeah, it's on Zoom because it's, there's representatives all over the country on that. So sounds like maybe a consensus then that Mayor Perez, and then do we want an alternate?
Do they request an alternate?
They didn't request one.
Sometimes they don't have alternates, for instance.
Okay.
It's, it, you can appoint an alternate, but it's not required. So it's
But well, that's, that's up to somebody if they want to be an alternate.
I, I don't, I wouldn't mind being an alternate, it's early enough that if needed, I can participate.
You can put Councilmember Martinez as alternate?
It's for RDP, right?
No, that's for the Federal Outreach and Advisory Council.
Two o'clock.
It's Zoom.
Oh, okay.
Can't do that one? Your school schedule?
You can put me under as our alternate, I'm sure if I can't make it for whatever reason, we can, we can call someone else.
Okay.
Alternate.
Anybody else want to make changes?
So, so for me, the only change would be the, the switch with Councilmember
VRSD, right?
VRSD.
Okay.
And then I'll keep the, I'll keep the other ones that I have.
Councilmember Martinez, what's happening with Reach?
Yeah, that's, that's a tough one. We're supposed, I, I mean, we're supposed to be meeting up tomorrow, but I, the members that are left, I mean, I've been calling. I'm not trying to, you know, point anybody out, but I've been calling and calling and I haven't really gotten a response. So the idea is to like, light the fire back up and bring it up.
I went to the last meeting too, and I think that exactly what Councilmember Martinez just said is, I think Reach is sort of figuring out how to regroup and kind of restart. So I think that's gonna be a big part of that job this year is helping the Reach Board figure out how to kickstart again, so.
That's gonna need a new board.
It's gonna need some work.
So everyone else is good with their changes? Do I need to make any changes? So I am no longer on the Water Agency. I am
I guess I missed that one, is that when you're, you're off of the Water Agency?
And Martin, Mr. Martinez is
And then we, we had an alternate before, do we need an alternate?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, Councilmember Martinez was alternate before, so I don't know if you want to reverse?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's alternate. I think it's time for you to get educated in water.
I, I participated, I, I participated as the alternate before.
What I have as far as changes is Federal Outreach and Advisory Council, Mayor Perez with the alternate Councilmember Martinez. Water Agency removal or swapping where Councilmember Martinez is the appointee and Mayor Perez is the alternate. VCOG, new alternate, Councilmember Hernandez. Ventura County Air Pollution Control District Advisory Committee, new appointee, Councilmember Gama. And Ventura Regional Sanitation District swapping where it's now Councilmember McQueen, or Mayor Pro Tem McQueen Lejeune as the appointee and Councilmember Hernandez as the alternate. So if that all sounds good, there could be a motion to approve that.
Like to make a motion to approve the recommendations?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously with Councilmember Hernandez being absent.
It's our Federal Outreach, already said that, I'm on the EDC. Oh, we have to change the City Ports Committee. We have to remove Martinez and add McQueen Lejeune.
Right, okay. Do we need a vote for that? It's essentially with the rotation.
My, my understanding is that happen, that happens by option.
Okay.
We'll make that change unless there's a motion to do something other than that.
We are done with that. Oh, sorry, I didn't ask if there were any public comments.
No public comments.
Yeah. So item number 10, which is the reorganization of specific positions within the city's parking enforcement division and city manager's office. Will you please present the report?
Yes, thank you, and I'm gonna keep this one pretty brief. Normally, doing some of these reorganization, reorganization type things do not require council action. And typically, when we're talking staffing, those are things that are handled administratively. But this is on the agenda for two reasons. One is we wanted to sort of let people know that we are looking at making a change with our parking enforcement division, moving it to the police department to work closely with our police department on identifying priorities and then doing priority-based enforcement. And, and being able to work with the police department in doing that. So we just wanted to let people know about that. And then second is because the reorganization does include the elimination of one position. It's a position that was created in 2020. It's the, in the city manager's, well, it's, it's bounced around from the city manager's office to the police department and back. And I think part of that was just trying to figure out how to make it work. But it was the position that was titled the City's Emergency Preparedness and Communications Manager Position. So as part of the reorganization and where we're trying to look to increase some efficiencies and things like that, we see a need in the city manager's office for more administrative support and analytical support to, to help with a variety of projects and not just focused in one particular area. So that part of the item requires an approval because we're eliminating a position and we're including a layoff of one position within the city. And, and so that item is on the agenda for approval because that has to be approved by the city council. So as I said, we're, we're making those adjustments to try to improve some of our service levels, improve the coordination between some of those areas. And ultimately, be more efficient with the few amount of employees that we have and try to figure out how to maximize that efficiency. So we recommend receiving the update on that process that I just provided. And then adopting the resolution approving and adopting the pay schedule with the elimination of a position and the creation of confidential administrative analysts to provide that administrative and analytical support to the, to our city as a whole. So we recommend both of those items at this time. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do council have any questions? Go ahead.
City Manager, thank you so much for the report. You spoke about deficiencies and I don't, you don't have to tell me what the deficiency you're trying to, to fix are. But just for our residents' sake, what are some of the changes or differences or the results of this reorg? What will our residents see?
Yeah.
Will they see that?
Yeah, I think one of the things for us is, you know, our police department's a good example when we're talking about the parking enforcement aspect. Of, our police department focuses on priorities. We don't have the resources to police every single issue at all times everywhere in the city. So our police departments focus on those priorities. And, you know, some people may see that if you're going a mile under the speed limit or a mile over the speed limit, you're not our police department is probably not pulling you over because there's just other priorities at, you know, that, that we're working on. And I think an easy way to like sort of summarize that is like the police department really enforces the, the spirit of the law versus the letter of the law. And hold, you know, holding people to the exact letter of the law. And for me, one of the key things is the parking enforcement team and, and where I've seen parking enforcement really be successful in other agencies is when they work with the police department and they understand that as well. That it's about enforcing the spirit of the law and not necessarily, not necessarily the letter of the law. You know, we've all kind of heard and seen things where, you know, people talk about getting rulers out and measuring if we're exactly 18 inches away or less from the curb. And one of the goals with, with having the police department work closely with parking enforcement would be providing sort of that guidance and, and helping them understand the spirit of law. What are we trying to accomplish? What safety improvement are we trying to reach versus having people feel like it's sort of arbitrary and, and, you know, the letter of the law, but not the spirit of the law? And I just think the police department is very good at usually working with other teams on that. Because the police department, police officers have had to become sort of experts in how to do that well and reasonably. So that people don't feel like we're just out hassling people. And so one of the things that we have tried to do recently was in the police department, we talked about sort of creating a traffic division, for lack of a, a better word, with our motorcycle officer. And so the officers focused on traffic and speeding and those issues. And so they will be working closely and tying in perfectly with the, the parking enforcement team to actually be able to sort of target, like what are the actual problems we're trying to solve here, you know? So I think for me on that, that item, that's a key, key improvement that we're hoping to see is sort of getting the, empowering the department to to have that goal of enforcing the spirit of the law, not just the letter of the law. And where our priorities are and where we, our community and we want to be focusing on priority-type issues.
I guess I'll just follow, just one more, I'll just follow that up with. So what do you imagine that the enforcement team will do differently? So I think now it seems like they're just giving tickets.
Yeah.
What, what other kind of things?
Yeah.
They be doing?
Yeah, actually, that'd be great because I think the chief and I have talked about sort of the path we want to take and I, it will be sort of moving into his camp, so.
I'd love to comment on this, especially down the path that you're talking about. Understand, the parking enforcement for decades in the city was under the police department and it got moved probably about 20 years ago or so, about the time I left. When it was under the police department, it, the, talk about the efficiencies and effectiveness. There are things that parking enforcement used to be able to do in conjunction with police services in the city, traffic, safety and freeing up your police officers from minor tasks that somehow we got away from. And I've seen that in the six months I've been back. For example, parking enforcement handles toes all day long with what we call a 180 form. Toe farm, and they stand by for tow trucks and they tow cars. It would be nice when in their free time to keep them on our radio frequency, they're on their own radio frequency now, put them on the police radio frequency like they were for decades before where they could actually come relieve an officer who's on an arrest or a traffic accident to not only help with the traffic control but to stand by for maybe the tow, to allow the officer to go back out and handle pending radio calls. It's very effective, it's a great use, and that is how it's done in the majority of cities surrounding us that have parking enforcement under. The other thing is when we talk about enforcement, James's point on with spirit of the law, letter of the law. I think so many folks in this awesome community have gotten use to the police department's ability to have that compassionate spirit side when we have to. And when we can, and we're kind of more of a know when we have to and say yes when we can, like we can, we can help folks out. And there are some parking enforcement rules that yes, when you drive by, you see this violation occurring. But do I need to cite somebody for blocking a residential driveway when the person did not call us? And it could be that person who was leaving with the, to go to work or something and forgot, oh, I forgot my phone in the house, went back, ran in the house to get it and they're coming out. Well, it's their driveway, so I don't want to take the initiative unless a resident's calling me. I shouldn't just observe it and then go take the enforcement action. That's something should probably be generated by the resident. There's, there's moments like that that we would follow under the leadership of the police department. So it's, it's, that, that's just one of the path that he talked about us taking. But the efficiency and effectiveness, there are times when even your police chief's out here during heavy winds helping with traffic control. But we have somebody in the city out writing parking tickets, we probably reuse that resource to help us with traffic control out here. So that's, that's a good example. but we have somebody in the city outriding parking tickets. We probably reuse that resource to help us with traffic control out here. So that's, that's a good example.
Great. Thank you. And I appreciate the example as well.
Yeah, I just want to make the comment that the letter of the law enforcement with parking has gotten all of us. And I think we've been talking about this for years, five years that I've been on council to, you know, I know so many stories where somebody forgets their keys, they run inside, they come out and have a $53 ticket and, and there's no capacity to, to, you know, give, give a little bit of a understanding that, hey, you know, people have issues like that. And so when we implement this, we are trying to improve our interaction with our residents. I think that's what I'm hearing. Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
We're trying to not be so much the letter of the law. Oh, it's one minute after nine and you haven't gotten your car yet. You get a ticket. So we're gonna, I think that's really good news for our community and I hope, just hope that our community is aware and works with us and makes it work.
Then just to sort of answer the question on the second position, I think one of the key things, just big picture, is big cities, typical, big cities have a lot of highly specialized positions, a person who does one thing. And that's all they do. And, you know, and in a big city, you can have the luxury of, of, of being able to have one thing that you focus on and that's your thing. And I think people who know my history know I worked in the city of Oxnard. City of Oxnard's budget at this point, I imagine, because when I left it was 400 million and I'm guessing they're about half a billion dollars now. We don't have that half a billion dollar budget. We have a $30 million budget and maybe getting a little smaller as we, as we move along. So for me, just big picture, some of these positions that we had created over the last couple of years that are highly specialized, what we're looking at is just sort of that small city reality that everybody here, and I think all of us can speak to it, everybody here right now and our police chief who's out on bike patrol and everything else, we all have multiple jobs. No one really has the luxury of just saying, this is the one thing I do. So we are looking at some of the positions that were created in the last couple of years where maybe we had more cannabis revenue and things like that coming in, but, and then looking at sort of how we can make those broader to help in multiple areas we need help versus just the highly specialized position. So that second change is essentially doing that with one of our more specialized positions.
And can you, oh, do you have any more, one more?
Go ahead. Just for information and for those in the airways, can you tell us a little bit about, so we're talking about a new position? And then you talked about the reorg and you said laying off someone. Can you tell me how this new position, I guess in your office, is going to affect our budget since budget is something we're all, we can?
Yeah. And so one of the things nice about having an analyst level position is that they actually are sort of the first round of review of things like the budget. And really where, you know, we have our budget, but anybody who's read our budget book knows it's actually 400 pages or whatever it is of line item by line item budget. And so it's not unusual and I've seen in several other cities, having an analyst position who's that person who's able to dig into that. Because a lot of the times when some of the, some of us are involved in it, we are having to look at the budget very quickly and bigger picture. And having somebody who's analyst level who can go in and actually go line item by line item with our finance director working closely. But it's somebody who knows, and that's part of why that position's a confidential position. It's somebody who knows what our goal is with the budget and knows what we're looking to try to do. That's a key sort of first step in that budget review process. And so there's the budget analysis. There's a lot of other analyst level work that they can, that that position would help with. Typically, it also helps with sort of like job classification analysis and those types of things. And that will ultimately take a lot of pressure off of positions like mine and the finance director and the HR manager because they're going to be sort of that first detailed review. So that's an area that will really help. And then they also can take on, and we laid out some, like a lot of other duties that they can help with as well.
Great. Thank you.
Can you also just note the emergency management for the public view, if there's any concerns about the fact that we removed the emergency management position? That will be moved to the police department and that will be handled by people with experience and who have training and education with emergency management. So there's no reason to be concerned about the fact that we're losing that position?
Yes, I think the police department and my department have already assumed those roles. You look at, and remember that position was kind of two things, emergency preparedness and communications. And for example, the police department has taken on their own communications and has managed their own Facebook page and on those types of things for several months at this point. And then our, the city manager's department would maintain communications for the rest of the organization. And then in the emergency situations we've had here since I've arrived, unfortunately, there's been more than one. People who, who, I don't remember the hurrah quake, which was sort of the first one. It's been kind of the two people that manage the EOC and operate that are myself and the police chief. And that's what will be occurring moving forward. It's going to be the, the city manager and the police chief working closely on emergencies. And that is what I have seen and what I have done in, like I said, in, really in smaller cities. And when I say small, I, you know, I know Port Winnimie, 30,000, we're not exactly a small town, but compared to the cities that have sort of a standalone specialized position. You know, it's the Oxnard, it's the county, it's the agencies that have, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars, not tens of millions of dollars.
Thank you. No further questions? Are there any public comments?
We have two public comments that were written. First one, city council members, per the stated recommendation, the proposed reorganization is intended to result in efficiency improvements and ultimately allow for better coordination and collaboration across departments, resulting in improved service to the Port Winnimie community. By all accounts that I'm aware of, members of the community have been very supportive of city manager Vega and police chief Federico as they have settled into their relatively new leadership roles in Port Winnimie. As such, it would be nice to see a unanimous vote from the council in favor of this recommendation, allowing them to manage city affairs with the goal of improving service to our residents. Thank you. Jeffrey Scarberry. The next one was provided by Laura D. Hernandez, since she was unable to be here. Dear Honorable Port Winnimie City Council, I would like to express my concern regarding item number 10 on the city council agenda for January 16, 2024. This item is requesting approval for a reorganization, including the elimination of the PIO and emergency preparedness manager position. As a former emergency manager and certified public information officer, I clearly understand the importance of these two functions prior to, during, and following a major disaster. These functions play a very important role in providing for the safety and well-being of our residents, protection of our environment, as well as critical facilities and lifelines. Each of these functions are responsible for a wide range of duties, each of which could respectively justify a full-time position. To combine these responsibilities into a management analyst position with additional duties will not increase the efficiencies or allow this position to be effective in carrying out their many responsibilities. Instead, the position will be forced to prioritize their list of duties and likely place emergency management at the bottom of the list. Emergency planning, training, and preparing will take a backseat to more pressing issues of the day. This reorganization appears to reduce and diminish the value of the emergency preparedness PIO rather than strengthen it. In my 40 years as an emergency management professional, I have seen this happen in many jurisdictions. It happens because people gamble with the notion that a major emergency or disaster won't happen to us. Well, it happened to us on December 21st. So why now on the heels of one of our worst disasters are we eliminating and dismantling this position? What is the urgency? As a result of declaring a local emergency, the city will be legally required to do a thorough after-action report, AAR. This AAR will identify areas for improvement and will enable the city to be prepared for the next disaster. Improving our preparedness can only happen if your city council understands the significance of this function and supports it as a high priority. I respectfully ask the city council to not approve the proposed reorganization as it relates to the emergency preparedness manager and PIO and instead wait until the completion of the after-action report. Thank you for your consideration, Laura D. Hernandez. And that concludes public comment.
Thank you.
I know it was submitted as a public comment, but since it is a statement from a council member, I'd like to just reply a little bit. And I think one thing I would sort of respond to that point is that we, my department, working closely with the police department, we have responded to the storm since 1:30, the morning of the storm to now and continuing on. You know, we were trying to estimate, you know, three more weeks, four more weeks. It might be longer than that at this point. And so I don't anticipate that any of the changes we're recommending will impact that in any way. And in fact, the reorganization intent is to actually provide us support and to strengthen our reaction and be able to have that support to be able to hand off lower priority things so that we can focus on the high priority things like emergency recovery. So I don't anticipate that being an issue and we recommend moving forward with the, with the item.
Thank you. Are there any comments?
City manager, can you just tell me if, is the confidential administrative analyst going to do any emergency preparedness work?
So they, the, any position in the city manager's office is going to be involved with emergency response. And so the reason I was sort of being fine with what I said there is the preparedness portion is going to be handled by a couple of positions. But the, this position would be pulled in, for example, into the EOC to help operate the EOC. The position would be pulled in as one of the points of contact for our other staff members to be able to get assistance out and those types of things. So this position would be involved in emergency response. And every position in the city manager's office is and is expected to be, so.
Yeah. So, so let me, let me ask it a little further. So I think I heard you say that the city manager and the police chief will lead the effort in the emergency services.
Correct.
So this is a support, kind of a support kind of staff?
Exactly. Exactly. And it's someone, you know, and we saw this during the storm and I'll ask you to speak in a minute because I know you, some of the same points, but during the storm as an example, we had situations where we were making decisions about what response was, we were going to go out and, and implement. And at the same time, we had media requests coming in that were coming to, to us. We had requests, even, you know, just little things like we, part of the city hall was flooding at one point. And so then we were also trying to coordinate, okay, you know, how do we deal with that while we're also focusing on the community and, you know, all these things? And so the, every position in the city manager's office gets pulled into that in the emergency. Every position in the city manager's office is part of that response as are multiple police officers. And we had police officers who were sick and, and came in at two in the morning and that we told, go home because you're too sick and if we really need you, we'll call you back, you know? So, so it is a team effort. And I think that's where, you know, kind of my initial point was just cities of our size, we don't have the luxury of having one person who does one thing. And all the positions that we're creating are ones that provide a variety of support so that we have support where we need it and when we need it. So if I can just let the chief add a little.
So, so two things. One, if you remember when I did my intro here to the council when I started, I think one of the reasons I was selected for the city was my extensive background in incident command system and emergency management. Not only have I been in government for 30 years and working in incidents, including the 90s storms that we're constantly hearing and referring to. Was in the city as a young officer, but large events with 60,000 people, planned events, the LA marathon. And as an ICS instructor, I was tasked with teaching numerous agencies in Los Angeles County, including police chiefs on running major incidents. So it's, it's an extensive background and I was assigned to the office of emergency management in the city of Santa Monica for some time, working in the city manager's office there during some critical times. You add the number of earthquakes I've worked through, the 94 earthquake in the city and several other natural disasters, coupled with the fact that you just hired a city manager who just was held to task with his fire incidents in Ojai, which at some points can be in a worse position than our city because you have limited resources, limited access to your city. So we hired the right person to come in at that role.
Yeah, at least one thing we don't have that they have is they have one way in and out of town and if it's closed, you're stuck. And so Winnimie, we have some advantages over, over that community.
And it's, we've talked a lot about recovery. We've talked a lot about what's been going on. I will also say this, your police department has more certified incident command system certificate employees than anybody else in the, in the city. We're actually fortunate to have a few people who worked in emergency management over there. So everything we set up in the middle of the night in that storm was kind of training on the go for those that, who hadn't had training for years here in the department, but they picked up very quickly and we got it together. We've talked a lot about the incident and a lot about the other stuff going on, but specifically, I will tell you this, 30 years in government, I've worked in emergency management. I've worked for a lot of city managers and I've watched people walk into emergency operations centers from the upper management of a city with limited decision-making abilities and constantly relying on others. James walked into that, actually was making decisions before he got in there on the phone with us. He was on point immediately with the storm. And he made some really tough decisions in that emergency operations center, which started your city's recovery immediately the next morning. We did not wait, but that's because he told us, move, go, make it happen. And he declared a, made the declaration of emergency right away to allow us to go beyond red tape to get resources and make things happen. So very impressed with him so far. Your city employees are very impressed with him. If you ask around, you will hear they're ready to have him lead them again in emergencies. So, thank you.
Thank you. If I could just add quickly, it's sorry, I keep doing that, I keep doing that to you, but.
I'll say some.
But I know the, I, I think there are a couple of questions and I think maybe I can see the concern of like, well, who's going to be responsible for it, for it, you know? And part of the, the reason why I'm saying it's, it's sort of that joint effort is because there's different phases of the emergency. And I just want to make this point because we just had the presentation earlier. To me and what, what is typical in small cities, but even at the county, it's the sheriff's department, office of emergency services. And the agency that responds to the emergency and that jumps into action is typically your public safety agency, your police department, your fire department. And, and they have the connection and they have the communication locked in and everything. So moving forward, the, you know, the vision maybe to, to address any concern about, you know, responsibility. The police department is the agency that should and, and would handle the emergency response. I'm going to be in the EOC. I'm going to be operating the EOC. And then I think one reason why I'm saying like, you know, that there's sort of the split of duties is like right now, the recovery phase that we're in on the storm, to me, that's where it's in my hands. And I'm the person who has the elected officials' phone numbers and emails and I'm the person who's calling people and trying to get letters of support and I'm trying to get FEMA declarations and those types of things. So I, I don't want to make it sound like we're like, yeah, we'll figure out. So I, I don't want to make it sound like we're like, yeah, we'll figure out how it's split up. Police will handle the emergency response and, and emergency issues. I will, like the storm, be part of that recovery process and operating the EOC. But we, we have that kind of areas of responsibility mapped out. And it's just part of, like I said, you know, when we had the EOC, we had ten finance people in the room helping out. Because we're a small city, and ultimately, everybody could get pulled in, and everybody's gonna be an emergency responder or disaster service worker, so.
Any of those, your, your city manager can be your incident commander and your operations chief. Your logistics section, your planning can be run by, can be headed by your police department with assistance from all the other departments. If I get to the city before him, I can be your incident commander until he gets there. It's, it's good teamwork. And in any case, my commander, Bob Albertson, can be the incident commander. My administrative sergeant can be your incident commander. People with experience and training on it. So, so it doesn't matter if, if he's the incident commander, as long as he has a strong operations logistics planning team beneath him, the city will be successful in its recovery.
I just wanted to say I'm really proud of this council for the hires of our police chief and our city manager. And at two P.M., December twenty first, I was communicating with our city manager because I got called over to the port to deal with our issues. And then I was very impressed to know that you were in communication with him. And, you know, by, I don't know, three in the morning, things were up and running, maybe even earlier. And so I, I, I just, I think it worked very well. I think the two of you rose to the occasion without any hesitation. Like I said, it started with myself communicating with our city manager at two in the morning because I had to respond to a situation at the port. So I'm just proud of both of you, and I'm really looking forward to the future with, with you two at the helm for any future emergency. And I know we're well-prepared, and thank you very much.
Thank you. And I'm getting a little off-topic, but I want to give a little bit of, a shout-out to that Fred Camarillo was on the phone with us at one forty-five, I think was, and I think you were here first, and you, and so I want to give some credit there. And a couple of our other department directors were, were here shortly after that. So we have a good team, and everybody knows, I think, you know, just going back, and I've said it a lot, but in a small city, everybody knows we're all gonna get pulled in, we all need to respond, we all have to pull our weight, because we don't have hundreds and hundreds of employees that we can pull in, so.
And I'll just clean it up, but I was there that day as well, but I sat in the corner and watched everybody and waited until they needed something from me because I didn't want to get in the way, but everybody was, it looked like a well-old machine, everybody doing what they needed to do. Everybody from finance to public works to community development to just staffing, Georgiana, everybody was in there doing what they needed to do. So it was a really interesting thing to see.
You had different department heads like Fred. He's running stuff from the field, but he sends a representative to the EOC, and that's all we need. We need, we need communication, but he's getting us vehicles while he's also handling the, overseeing what's happening to the water flow in the city, the pumps. If you understand, this is what your small-town employees do. This is their dedication, their multiple decades, they step up in a crisis, and they were running stuff collaterally while they're in the field being hands-on.
Thank you, chief. Okay, so the recommendation is to receive the updated, provided, the update provided on reorganization of specific city functions to increase efficiencies and/or service levels, and to adopt a resolution approving and adopting an updated comprehensive pay schedule, approving the creation of a confidential administrative analyst position to provide needed administrative and analytical support to the city, and ratifying the layoff of the city's emergency preparedness and communications manager due to organizational changes. May I have a motion and a second?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Oh, wait, no, is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously with Councilmember Hernandez being absent. Thank you. And the final business item is the Memorial Day Ceremony at Winingy Beach Pier. Will staff please present the reports?
Yes, thank you. At the last council meeting, there was a request from Councilmember Gama, seconded by Mayor Perez, but, and agreed to place on a future agenda by the entire council, a request to hold a Memorial Day Ceremony at our Winingy Beach Pier. And so we placed the item on the agenda for the council to consider. We included in that request the kind of explanation from Councilmember Gama, who was the original person, along with Mayor Perez, were the two original people to make the request. And so that is included in the report. I think very simply, the idea would be a Lost at Sea Memorial and a Memorial Day Ceremony on Memorial Day, Monday, May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, starting at eight A.M. at the Winingy Pier. The explanation for sort of the connection and why it makes sense for Winingy to do this with our history and our connections to the military and the Navy base and, and a variety of things is included in the report. But essentially, we're asking the council to consider and approve the request to, to host the event. And once that's approved, we would move forward with preparation, inviting different officials, elected officials, members of the military organizations around us and others to, to make the event happen. So the item is placed for the council to consider authorizing that event starting this year.
Thank you. There are any questions for staff?
Is this item gonna come back for final approval, or this is, this is the one in the last thing?
I think the idea with this, similar to like Veterans Day, and actually, a lot of similarities to the Veterans Day, but the idea is we're looking for the approval to hold the event. There's a little explanation of the vision. I wasn't anticipating bringing the item back to, with like, you know, to like vet every, every detail. We're planning to hold it in line with this vision. If you want to provide specific instruction, you could do that now, or the council could always say, you know, we approve it, but we want the plan to come back. That's another option, but I didn't anticipate that and/or recommend that.
How far into the pier is it gonna be? Is it gonna be in that one center where like, you know, if it did an S, like right in the center?
Yeah, that, that, and actually, I, I had said I'd make sure to let Councilmember Gama speak to it because it's noted as, with his explanation there, so I'll hand it over.
Up in San Luis Obispo County, I believe at Cayucus Pier, they, they've been doing this for a number of years. And it, it's a ceremony, Lost at Sea, it's a Memorial Day honoring all the military personnel lost, and specifically with that ocean connection, Lost at Sea. And the ceremony is very similar to what we have done in the past with Memorial Day. However, the conclusion of the ceremony is every participant, everyone that's there, we, we walk to the end of the pier, and we drop a wreath into the ocean as a tap is being played for all those lost at sea. And it's just a really moving and touching event tonight. And the, the vision is, is that, you know, we have the Navy here, we have the port here, we have a big ocean here, and we have a pier. And so it's like the perfect, perfect venue for, for this, for this ceremony. And typically, we probably should have started planning four or six months ago, but I think we could pull this off and hopefully it'll go well, and we could make it a future annual event. But, but one thing for sure, this will be the first time that we've ever done something like this. And so I think we could really, really bring, bring people together, bring our neighbors together, and, and really have a wonderful kickoff to the Memorial Day celebration. Because typically, what we've done in the past is we'd have our Memorial Day service here at City Hall on Memorial Day, so. Yeah, that's.
Can, can we paint the, the gate, the fence, you know, we didn't always use to have that fence, you know, but it's, it's just an idea. I, I had brought it up like maybe over a year ago that we should probably have like a really nice gate, you know, for the entrance for the pier. I know maybe we don't have it in the budget to put a new, new, new gate. But I, I think that's been one of my dreams to maybe have something even like, like Santa Monica, like the pier. But could we at least like paint it? Because I, I think it looks a little.
I can follow up on it. I'm, I was gonna say, I'm debating if the city attorney's gonna yell at me for talking about it because it's not on the agenda.
I can bring it up at the end.
And we could follow up and we could provide sort of some options or ideas, you know, of what we can do. I had a, a plan for the gate, but, you know, some, as Councilmember Martinez just mentioned, you know, kind of day by day, we're learning about some budget issues. So, okay, and I have to stop talking, but, so we'll regroup on that.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Yes. So did, I hear you correctly to say we could approve it tonight and then have some discussions about finalizing.
Yeah, it's, the, the council would have, you know, it's on the item for the council to consider. Council has a variety of options. It can be approved with the basic explanation that we provided, or if the council were to say, you know, we want to know more detail on this, this, or, you know, whatever it is, that, that can also be done by the council. I think the one point to bear in mind is it is rapidly advancing, so there's not a whole lot of time to, to go through it. But that's, we could if, if it's the desire of the council.
Well, let everyone know that I do know an admiral, and I reached out to him, and a retired admiral, and asked if, one, would he be willing to come out from Virginia? Or two, would he be able to recommend some high-ranking Navy official in our area? Dr. McQueen La John, I think you got some contacts over there too. So we know that time is short, we're throwing a program together, but we have more time than we did for Veterans Day, and look how Veterans Day turned out.
That's great.
Any further questions?
No.
Thank you. Are there any public comments?
No public comments.
All right, the recommendation is to consider the request to host a Memorial Day event located at Winingy Beach Pier on May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, and provide direction regarding the event. May I have a motion and a second?
Motion to approve.
Second. Any further discussion? Please take the vote.
James, just were you clear on motion to approve with staff direction? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously with Councilmember Hernandez being absent.
Thank you. City manager, comments and reports. City manager, do you have any comments or reports to share?
So we don't normally do this, and this might be another thing the city attorney talks to me about later, but we had somebody who just came to the meeting after public comment ended, and I think was gonna speak to this. Obviously, it's not a city event, we can't really endorse it, but it seems like a worthy event that I'll just put a plug in for, which is the Business and Leadership Awards Gala at, put on by the Central Coast Minority Enterprise Resource Affiliates, is coming up on Saturday, February third, twenty twenty-four, from six to nine P.M. at the Hilton Garden Inn in Oxnard. So if you want more information on it, again, it's not a city event, but I'm sure if you Google the CCMERA Business and Leadership Awards Gala, you can get more information on that. And then likewise, for, for, for the, or an event that happens in the city that we're typically part of and we typically attend is coming up, the January thirty-first Alaska Airlines Memorial Ceremony at three thirty P.M. at Winingy Beach. And so we want to let people know that that is happening this year, that's coming up. And you can join us out at the Alaska Airlines Memorial on January thirty-first for that event. And I think that is everything I have.
Thank you. Councilmember reports and comments. Start with you, Mr. Councilmember Martinez.
Yeah, so we should be having a reach meeting tomorrow. Our next Sister City meeting is the first Wednesday of next month on the seventh, and there's some Sister City videos that are gonna be coming out soon, so I think the community's really gonna enjoy those videos. Basketball and pickleball, I want to say, have been a success at opening up the gym at the Boys and Girls Club. Extremely packed for basketball on Tuesdays. I missed out on tonight, but it gets so packed that it's really difficult for you to get a game in. If you, if you lose, you, you're probably just done for the night. Saturdays have been kind of light, and like I mentioned, pickleball have, has been a big success. The Run for Your Heart five K seems to be full, but I'm still hoping that maybe we can make some changes to allow more people to participate.
We'll, we'll look at that, and if we can, we'll announce it as soon as possible.
And I think you, you already mentioned the Alaska Memorial, I think that's all I had for today. Thank you.
Councilmember Gama.
Thank you. I attended the V-COG meeting last week, and we went over our priorities and a lot of priorities. And again, like I mentioned earlier, I focused in on one of the priorities having to do with coastal waterways, beach environment. And so I'm going to work my tail off to try to make that a true priority and try and get all our neighboring cities to work together to better our ocean environment, because I think it does need some work. I was just so relieved and so excited to, to again, participate with the Ojai Valley Youth Foundation. And it's worthy to note that this is my second year spending time with the kids up there, getting to know them, getting to work with them, and hear, hear their thoughts about leadership and all this stuff. But one of the things that was really interesting is like about every thirty-seven minutes, somebody would come up to me and tell, are you Mr. Gama? Do you know James Vega? He used to be our city manager. We want him back. So it really, it was really nice to be there, but I learned a couple of things. And a month and a half ago, the kids invited me up to watch a movie called, it was called The Children's March. And a lot of people don't know this. I didn't know this, and it just blew me away that Dr. Martin Luther King was having trouble finding adults willing to get arrested because the bail was so high, and some of them would lose their jobs. And so the, the movement was kind of stalled. And so somehow, some way, got this radio disc jockey involved, and they started speaking in code to kids, and they planned a student lockout to, to get the, the movement back on track. And so like four thousand kids walked out of school on what they called the D-Day. And I think over twelve hundred of them got arrested. And this movie was just so moving because it's something we don't hear about, like, you know? And so at the Ojai Valley Youth Foundation, this year, their topic, their theme was Finding Your Inner Strength. And so we were able to weave this movie into, you know, this is what the kids did, they found their inner strength. And they really jump-started the, the movement at that point because it was stalled. And then the other thing that I kind of was thinking about hard is like, I was born in March of nineteen sixty-three. The, the Children's March occurred in April of nineteen sixty-three, so to think that our country was, we had the races segregated in school, I just can't imagine how that was even possible. But then in watching this movie, it was pretty vile. And so the, you know, Finding Your Inner Strength really made sense because these kids just walked out of school, and as they're, they have some great video of it, and these kids are dressed like they're going to church, but they're going to jail. And the movement is, you know, was just non-stoppable. So really enjoyed my day with the Ojai Valley Youth Foundation. And I look forward to spending more Martin Luther King holidays there, and I learned something. He wasn't always Martin Luther. He and his father's name was Michael, and his father went to Europe. And he was so impressed with Martin Luther that he came back and changed his name and his son's. So, you know, you learn something new every day, so it was a great day yesterday, and I'm really glad to be able to be a part of that programming. That's it.
Thank you, Mayor Protim.
Thank you, mayor. I'd like to first say I was able to go to the Oxnard MLK event. It was wonderful. And I hear the Ojai one was nice as well.
Yeah, and there was a great band right there. You might, you might know them.
Yeah, he said, yeah, he said you all had a good time. So I'll just share, so I participated in all of my, my committees. I did announce last meeting that I was elected as vice chair of Gold Coast. So I want to add that I was elected for vice chair of the Air Pollution Control Board as well. So, so the Regional Defense Partnership Committee is getting ready for their annual RDP Washington visit, March the twen, and seventeenth through the twenty-first. March the twen- and seventeenth through the twenty-first of this, of this year. Now, I have already communicated out to the council that I was going to be mindful of my allocation this year. I am going to stick to that. I'm, I'm going to do my very best to look at what my numbers are when I come back from the, the conference and then figure out how I'm going to make that trip happen. And then I announced the last couple of meetings about R D P is looking at their, their budget. So what was decided at the last meeting is that they're going to do a city tour rather than have me come and talk to you or someone call you. The committee is going, going to go around to the cities and communicate what it is that we're doing, historically, what we've done, what kind of programs has our lobbying brought to Naval Base Ventura County, the things that we're working on now. So we're hoping that they're going to do that in the next month and a half or so. And they'll, they'll provide a proposal for the allocation going forward. Then I think finally, we had the Museum Governance Committee had a meeting la- early last, was it last week? Last week, so we've started, and I see we have some folks in the room have been helping and participating with the committee. And so we, we've been at the museum boxing up items so that we can turn the facility over to the facilities folks to do their part. And then we're hoping to have, have the facilities folks work done by, I think, mid, mid February. And then we'll, we'll be able to move forward from there. But I, I didn't get a chance to go, I know Councilmember Gama, Mr. Thomas out there and Becky and several others were over there and worked quite a few hours on Saturday, past Saturday. So we're moving forward, I think we've, we've been getting some real good guidance from our deputy city manager and Anna Handley. And so appreciate their support and so we're really hoping to have the museum open. I wouldn't say before the end of the year, but mid-year or close to that. So I think that, I did want to mention a couple of things. So the last couple of council meetings, I reported, I report on V C T C. But I think for the people at home, I failed to communicate why I'm reporting on V C T C. So just wanted to, to communicate out, and that's the Ventura County Transportation Commission. So V C T C is responsible for receiving the funds, federal funds, state funds, grants to support all of our modes of transportation, the rails, our bike paths, our buses. And so that's why I, I try to report on that quite often. So I wanted to share that V C T C reported their, the completion of their first year of youth ride free program where students, I think they have to be at least thirteen or fourteen, can ride wherever they'd like to in the county. And so they've had, Ventura County had just over one million free rides to the youth. And so that program is scheduled to continue through this year. So that's been a, a, a great success because they're looking at trying to increase right, rider share back to pre-COVID numbers. And this has been one of the, the good, the good stories that why we're moving closer to, to those numbers. And I guess finally, I'll report that V C T C submitted the S B one twenty-five allocation package to the California State Transportation Agency for funds totaling ninety-eight million dollars between the transit and inter-agency rail, zero emission transit capital program. These funds approved by the commission at, were approved by the commission at the December first meeting and will support Ventura County continuing current levels of transit service, update on transit fleets, transition to zero emission fueling and implementation of new programs and technologies that will help grow ridership throughout the county. So V C T C is doing a really great things to support our, all our modes of transportation in Ventura County. So I wanted to share that with you.
Thank you. Is that it? Thank you. So I attended the Surpritus Club International, it's called Stop Human Trafficking Event on Saturday and we presented a proclamation for them and there's a new Surpritus Club Channel Islands that oversees Waeneme that just started up and their charter celebration is on Friday, so if any women in the community want to attend, get ahold of me and we can get you an invitation for that. This Thursday is E D C's annual meeting, if anybody wants to attend. And did you mention the beach cleanup on Saturday?
No, but we'll be there.
Isn't there a, a major beach cleanup on Saturday, like a?
Surf Rider is organizing, I think, January twentieth, I believe, but it's, it's over, it's out there on social media, but every Saturday we're there, so. But they're, they're organizing on the other side.
Oh, for, okay.
Of the border.
And that's it, that's all I have for committees. So we move on to requests for future agenda items. Go ahead.
I liked, I like to see a, a report on how we're doing in terms of like the basketball and the pickleball, like the, because we're opening up Tuesdays, Thursdays and Saturdays and possibly talking about maybe turning one of those days into like a league day. So I've done basketball leagues in Camarillo, in Thousand Oaks, in Ventura and Oxnard, but Waeneme's never had any of those leagues and I, I think it, it wouldn't cost the city any more money as long as the people are paying the fees. You know, I, I don't know if that's possible or not, but I, I would just want us to maybe look into that. Motion for a report in terms of like the update, how, how it, how it's going, what can we do in the future in terms of either we're going to continue it, change it, maybe add a league day for certain sports?
Something you need as an agenda item?
We can always provide, we can provide like the, we're getting statistics of how many people are using it and that kind of stuff. So we could provide that just in memo form. I think the idea of if we were going to start like a basketball league, that is probably something that we'd have to talk about with, with the council because it's going to use some, some resources.
Okay, I'll second that. Madam Clerk, take a vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously with Councilmember Hernandez absent.
And if I could quickly, I think the timing wise, since pickleball just started, I think we'll try to like wait a couple of weeks and get a couple.
There's no rush, but pickleball seems to be doing well. And then before I ask for this request, do we have our agendas in Spanish?
I think we have the notes, I think, related to translation. Maybe Georgiana can confirm if that's true, but, but I don't think we make it available in Spanish, but.
We don't currently have it available in Spanish, but I know we have the Google Translate on the website.
Okay, can I make a motion to, for us to have a discussion to possibly bring, you know, translations of the agendas in Spanish?
Second.
Do, since we're going to have a, since there'd be a discussion, would we want to just talk about, a lot of cities right now are sort of trying to figure out, you know, what to translate, whether to have translation services at the meeting, which is expensive, but, you know, should, should we just talk about translation as a whole?
And there's, and there's new legislation taking effect this year on the subject that's being evaluated currently.
Yeah, we can bring an update on all that.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously with Councilmember Hernandez absent.
And last request, that fence, can we, can we bring it back maybe sometime before? The gate, before Memorial Day, you know, just talking about some updates, what we can do with that gate. Like what's, what's actually possible within our budget.
Yeah, and for us, it was.
I'd like to.
Some point, but it was like a year ago. And I think at that point, it was just sort of said that we have some money in the budget to design something.
Can I amend the motion a bit? Is that allowed?
What would you like to add or remove?
I would just like to have a full discussion. I think we went fifty years without a gate. And since COVID, we've been stuck with this gate, so. So if we're going to stick with the gate, then let's have a big discussion, let's have a nice gate.
Well, just a discussion about the gate in general, we can decide we're going to take it away or add it or make it better, paint it or whatever, but just a discussion.
Yeah, I would say if you want to have a discussion about it, that it would be a discussion about the gate in general. We can also talk about, you know, what we're seeing with the budget at that time so that we know if we have a gate, it's, we're only going to spend this much money on it, you know, that kind of a thing. So if, if there's consensus, that's what we would try to prepare, so.
Okay, so my motion is discussion about the gate at the pier.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously with Councilmember Hernandez absent.
Anything else?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Mayor Protim, do you have anything? All right. Do you have anything? You don't get to anything, I already decided you don't get to do anything. All right, so the next regular scheduled meeting is Monday, February fifth, twenty twenty-four at six thirty P M. The meeting is now adjourned, the time is nine ten P M.